Welcome. It's Anne. Are we better? Yes, we're not echoing. Okay, sorry about that. Welcome to this meeting of the ISACUAS School Board on April 22nd. This is our work study. We have not done a work study in a really long time, but certainly not since the board came back in person. So I apologize for the slightly late start. We're still working out the bugs and how this all works with the screen sharing and the streaming and whatever. But I think we are, I think we are set. I will just remind whatever members of the public are here that a work study is a work meeting of the board. We hold it in public. We do not take public input during a work study. So those are the rules. And we are here to discuss, or to, I guess, to wordsmith, our proposed Resolution 1163, Reduction in Force Restoration Parameters, and Resolution 1164, Fall 2021 Teaching and Learning Modality Plan. Do we want to maybe tackle 1164 on this, the idea that it will go faster?
I had the same thought.
Okay. Do you want to throw that one up on the screen? I need to. Find it myself.
I have it up on the screen.
Okay. Good, because I can't find it. Okay, so staff proposed this language so far, and I will throw it out to the board as to, are we good with what's up there? Do we want to edit what's up there? Is there anything we want to add or change?
I'm just getting open.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm scrolling as I'm reading it. Okay, so I think the, the whereas's tell our story of getting here. And the key is the, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Directors of the ISACUAS School District that the 2021, 2022 school year fully open to in-person learning. And that would be, you know, our intent, that the next school year be fully open to students as we were before. You know, whether masks are required, you know, is sort of irrelevant as long as it allows us to have the, all students back in school full-time.
Okay, any other? Sydney.
Okay, I was deep in. So for the whereas, I think for me, what I was hoping for here was the acknowledgement of the current and existing operating safety guidelines and our ability to meet the guidelines set out to date. Like, just to be clear, that we are, we are demonstrating our ability to meet the guidelines as they exist, and we'll continue to do that into the future. Because I think for me, that's a big part of it, right? The fact that we, we know, we know now what we didn't know when we, we said we would go remote, which is what are the safety guidelines? And we've now been able to implement them as well as demonstrate that we can execute against them. And so I think that's an important whereas for me in saying the ultimate proclamation.
And would we maybe want to include in that that we reached agreement with our labor partners as to how we do that?
Yeah, I think so.
Because, because I think that's important too. Not just, yes, ISD knows what the rules are and we know how to play by the rules, but we have worked collaboratively with our labor groups to agree how we can operate within those guidelines.
I agree with that.
And, and we all look to Anne.
I know. I'm now thinking, okay. So first off, you know, one is where we would like it in the story of whereas's. And.
I liked it where, right where the dot, dot, dot whereas was. That's where.
Because it's before we bring kids back.
Correct.
We determined. Okay, so do you have any specific language that you are, you want me to type in?
Actually, I would put it, I would put it one further down because I would leave whereas we started the year in a remote teaching model. But then.
Oh, fair.
We.
Oh, okay.
We figured out all the rules.
It was the exceptions that why, because we were calling out exceptions. Like, we had to put them in place even prior to the exceptions. Students with disabilities. You see what I'm saying, Suzanne?
The students with, because with the students with disabilities and English language learners from whom this distance learning would present challenges when we started bringing them back. But that was through the, that was all about the 1920 school year.
Yeah.
And really, most of the, the work around the protocols around safety were for the 2021 school year.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about. Suzanne was saying she would go one further down. So after the next one, 2021.
Where you've got it now, Anne, is where I would put it.
I can't see that far enough. Me, I have the limited vision.
Right, so that's where I've moved to. I, I left the other whereas in case we go back to putting anything in there.
Okay, I guess, but my point about putting it there is that the point above, what's above it now talks about the exceptions of the students that we did bring back.
Right. And I was on the one above it where we were talking about exceptions. So I was on the wrong one.
You know what I mean? So in that next one, we talk about exceptions. So I just, we had to have the safety protocols in place even for those exceptions.
Do you see her point? So that she puts us back where the first whereas is. Because we had the safety protocols in place before we brought back any learners.
Okay, all right. I'm not going to argue about where it goes.
Okay.
If you want it, that's fine.
Let's work on the words.
That's fine, yeah.
Now I'm back.
It's more important what it says.
Yes. So do we have suggestions on what you would like?
Let's make, let's make one. So whereas we were. So I don't know the right thing to call this, safety guidelines. So that's maybe what gives me pause in the sentence, how we want to phrase them. If it's like DOH guidance or.
Department of Health. Yeah, so I'd say whereas the, the district followed or implemented COVID mitigation.
Perfect.
As recommended by. CDC and Department of Health, Washington State Department of Health Guidelines and Recommendation. Oh, yes.
I will join the Zoom.
Did you get all that, Anne?
She's, she's having trouble typing. I think we've put her on the spot.
You did.
She's doing great.
Okay, so, so I've got, you know, whereas this class school district, oh, implanted, implemented. I'll fix spelling later. Just don't make fun of me as I spell. Okay, implemented and adhered to the health and safety guidelines according to the, and now you guys came up with a bunch of places.
The CDC, the Department of Health, and Labor, and LNI, Labor and Industries. Okay, how about, can we say the school district comment in collaboration with its labor partners?
That's exactly what I was thinking, those words.
Like that?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. One little one I was gonna suggest was where we say whereas in April 2021, the district offered opportunities for all staff to receive COVID vaccine. Didn't we actually start in March? So March and April? And the district. Something like that?
In the part where we say that we began the school year in a remote teaching model, a remote learning model? No, I guess remote teaching model. Do we want to input something in there that indicates that that was done via a waiver from the state board? Because I know people keep saying, well, will you do remote learning in the fall? And one of the things we have said as part of that answer is we don't know if there will continue to be a waiver from the board.
I think that's an important factor to have in there, that that was part of the decision-making is we would not be able to do that if there was not a statewide waiver.
Yeah, I don't know if it needs to be buried in there or if it should be its own whereas. Okay, so again, do you have, because you use different verbiage than I did. Do you have suggested verbiage for that?
And where we would put it.
And, and should it be its own whereas? Well, I think it is because we are, one of the reasons, not the most important, but one of the reasons that we're saying we want to be full-time in person next year is that we don't know that that waiver is going to continue to exist. Right, that's the point I'm trying to make. Right. Okay.
I started.
I think, I think you gotta help her with this a little bit.
Okay, so.
Oh, so we could read it?
Does that help?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, there you go. Thank you. See, I've got it right here. I can see it. Oh, really? Okay, I can't. Yeah, yeah, I don't think there's another, that's about as big as I can get it. Okay. Whereas in the.
That's when we say collect full apportionment while students are in a remote.
I can't spell apportionment, but that's okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I know, that's not the right word. I know. I can't spell it. I can't spell it. Okay, don't worry about that word. The state board to collect full apportionment. Oh, true, because it was both. Okay, okay. Or hybrid. How about if we call it that? We're learning in remote or hybrid settings?
What I've heard is that they're gonna take this issue up in July.
Oh, that's very timely.
Yeah, that's exactly what superintendents are saying. We would sure like you to make a decision on that earlier because it's gonna dictate whether or not, one, we have the option of offering a remote option next year at all, so.
That's what happens when they meet quarterly. If it's not on their main agenda, we won't see it.
Yeah, and, and planning for, to create a remote option for students beginning in July or whenever the decision comes out from that meeting, that's very, 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 very challenging.
I was trying to look it up. Okay. Yeah.
So we would encourage the state board to do that sooner if possible.
Okay, thank you.
It has the word portion in it. That's how I always remember. Give me my portion.
I'm the wrong person.
Okay, any other suggestions?
Okay, you all look through it or if you want me to scroll, because you, to the extent people can see it up there. Right, it's telling our story.
Yep.
But I, I do think that, you know, because we've put in this, I do would, I would appreciate some type of whereas at the, at the end that says that there's uncertainty of our ability to do any type of remote or hybrid learning in the fall. So that, because that's one question people are asking. Well, are you going to do this? Are you going to do that? Well, right now, there's an uncertainty that we would have the same accommodations from the state.
That's the way I've been answering that question. I mean, when people ask me, are you gonna have a remote option next year? I say, well, I, I truly can't answer that question right now. If nothing changes, we, it's a. Yes. And, and to be clear, you can, there, there are existing ALE rules that, but again, that's very complicated too. And there are districts that are choosing to just go down the ALE path. But correct me if I'm wrong, that does have an impact on your funding. Yeah, you don't receive.
Seventy-five percent, right?
For an ALE model. And there's additional work that comes with that as well.
Have we ever done remote learning opportunities for elementary? Or have they all been at the secondary level?
I don't recall any remote learning opportunity, up until this year.
Up until, obviously, up until end of last year, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so I would say that Marnie's whereas should be the last one. Oh, I'm sorry, Sydney.
No, that, that's good. I guess my question is, in, in the things I want and things I don't want, right? So I, I wonder, how do we consider learning away from the school building in case of, in case of issues, snow, other, other issue? Is that the same as, is that the same construct as what we're talking about here with the ALE? Because I, in my mind, I, they're two different things. Or at least I, I think about them differently, which is, one is, do we have a whole intact system where a student can be learning all year online? Versus, do we have the capability to switch to a remote learning method for a shortened period of time because of some environmental disruption?
This, this year, this year, we have that capability. But keep in mind, that's because we pushed out over 8,000 laptops and 1,500 Wi-Fi hotspots. Assuming we don't, if, if, if we're coming back as normal as we would hope, we're not a one-to-one district. We don't check out a computer to every student. So the likelihood of us being able to do that in the event of a snowstorm next year would be very low. And again, it would also depend on what rules the state board puts in place. Because under the old rules, under the old rules, the answer would just be a simple no. Even if I had a computer and connectivity for every family, the answer would be no.
Right, so if we had been in the prior rules before COVID and everybody had devices, we still couldn't have a remote school day because there was too much snow on the ground to run our bus.
Right, you couldn't, you couldn't receive funding.
Funding.
And being, being, having. Right, even if we had a Zoom class with the teacher teaching, that's not under the. Because it's not the direct supervision.
So the county, so in Sydney's model, the statute has changed.
Right.
And I, Sydney, I.
Because that's what I want.
Yeah.
By the way.
You know, Sydney, that discussion, that discussion I know is happening. I don't, I'm not aware of any, I know there's discussions about the structure of the school year and everything that are happening. I'm not aware of any specific legislation that made it through this session. But certainly, I would think that the experience of this year as it relates to the school calendar and as it relates to the possibility of providing remote instruction in the event of weather closures or emergency closures, that is something that's, that I know people are, are very interested in. I believe there was even legislation, at least proposed, that would have made the state a one-to-one state. I'd love to see where the money for that would come from.
I don't know if it fits here, but if we're going to do a resolution such as this, I, I would love for us to consider something to the point of not only, what is our mode in the fall? But the, the delivery methods we would like to pursue or champion or promote as available to our school district into the future. Because I think that, I think that that would be an absolute valuable add-on and one of, if you think of it as a silver lining perspective of the year, to be able to maintain. And knowing it would be legislation or other things, I do think from a, I guess, a point of conviction, which is what we're doing, that's one I would like to table as, is that something we would like to explore, promote, champion, words such as that into the next school year as well?
Sydney, were you, thoughts on that? Were, were you thinking about that as part of this resolution?
I was. I was, because what.
Well, it could be a second. You can have more than one be resolved, right?
Correct, yeah. I, I think. Yes, I think as a statement of our intent, now that's my intent, so I'm stating it. But if it's one that we, we, we think is appropriate across us, I do think now is the time to sort of put that stake in the ground. Because for us to lose that piece in the silver lining category, I think would be unfortunate.
I agree, especially since we as a board have not had like a legislative proposal specifically where we voted to say this is a, this is our slate of advocacy items for the year. We haven't done that since the Olympia Coalition.
I mean, could we just add on to the end and say something like, in addition, the board resolves to pursue? Yeah.
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 And you remember, the weather event is also the driver.
You can't.
You can't.
Right.
You can probably do it in certain snow events, but it's like, you know, we talked about this a lot.
Well, yeah.
But most of our closures are around snow.
Yeah, but snow drives power. When you have ice, that snow and ice.
Power too.
Yeah.
I don't think it stops you from doing. This is simply an expression of where, where you would like to go and what you would like us to consider and do, so.
I mean, I, yes, and in my mind, it's not just weather event. It is illness that keeps students out of the school for a period of time that they can't rejoin school, right? You have kids with long-term illness. I think there's circumstances by which individual learners can't rejoin the classroom. And to allow a way for them to do that, I think, is an interesting, in, in addition to just the weather. But we've had power, floods, snow, pandemic in just my two years. So maybe I was.
It's getting.
Maybe there's a theme there, unfortunately.
How about, yeah, for remote school opportunities? Due to emergency issues, I guess.
In response to emergency issues?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because it's not all the time.
That's better.
Right, yeah.
That's better.
Yeah, it changes. Oh, you have Jake?
And all our conversations are still too much of this, you know, why? Why do you all think? We have a chronology.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, some of it is, you know, tied, our recognition as well of Governor Inslee's proclamation about the mental health crisis.
Mental hell.
I mean, we recognize that all along was the issue. We could reiterate that.
Yeah, I, I have publicly stated, Director Moore, and as early as, earlier today, that I believe that in-person learning is the best practice for, for the vast majority of students. I, you know, it's hard to make absolute statements, but.
Right.
I, I do think, I do think, and I don't have a problem with saying that, but I think we ought to say, you know, in, in spite of the fact that our teachers have worked really hard to make remote learning as successful as it could be, we still believe, and, and I don't know if that's exactly how you want to say it, but we still believe that in-person learning is the best model for our students' academic and social emotional success or something.
Yeah.
I, I definitely think that, recognizing that.
But, but I do want to recognize.
It's not staff that has, didn't do a good job.
Yeah.
Right.
I would, I would definitely want to make that clear.
Because, you know, our teachers have done amazing work to make the remote model as successful as it would possibly be. We still think for a whole variety of reasons, in-person is better.
Okay, Suzanne.
Or for most people.
Now that you've explained that, you have to give me back some of.
Okay.
So in spite of the fact that our teachers have.
But let's just say that whereas although our teachers have, that in spite of just sounds weird.
And I would just say staff, because I think it's.
That's a good point. It's a collective effort, all staff.
Although staff have worked to create. Have created a successful remote.
Well.
A found and supportive remote model.
Oh, that's better. Remote learning model. Are we getting like to this? Yeah, the board believes that in-person learning provides the greatest opportunity for students' academic success and social emotional well-being.
Did I get some of that?
Yeah, you got the apostrophe in the wrong place in students, but.
And too many eyes and opportunity.
Sorry.
Yeah, getting there. All right. Okay, there I lost. I'm gonna get our, there we go.
And then we also had Marnie's whereas. I forgot what it was, whereas.
There was no guarantee that the state would.
There's uncertainty around what will be possible next year.
Well, I mean, even to that, this is.
You can even say under normal state statutes.
Are you talking about that in, as a separate whereas?
Yes.
As a separate whereas.
Okay, let me, regardless of where we end up putting the whereas. Help me with where you want to go, Marnie.
Basically that the state without, um, without changes to current state statute. The district, it would, it is uncertain, the district would be able to provide. A full remote learning option. For students.
This is more about our desire to have. Full-time school, so are you getting at?
Yeah.
Even, even if the state came back and said, okay, go ahead, you can, you can have remote, you don't have to offer it, but you could. Yeah, we're still saying we don't really want to.
And I.
I'm not sure that we would do it.
I've publicly stated that I have really mixed feelings about that, because I do, given the previous statement, I do believe. An in-person model is the best model, so do I want to even do that? I want to encourage people to come in person, frankly.
Because really, we didn't create, we didn't really create online school, we created in-person school via remote.
Yes.
Right, which isn't necessarily the best model, and I think that was why some of it was so hard, because we. I mean, we tried to recreate what we know to be the very best thing, which is the classroom, but did it through Zoom?
Which is why live streaming was so important to us.
Right.
Remember, that was a big component of our initial ISD Live.
Right, that there was, it was live teaching as if they were in a classroom.
Yes.
But everybody was in little Zoom box.
And that's not, that's not necessarily what you receive if you are in a remote online school.
Right.
So could, could we say something here about whereas the state of Washington or? Has a number of available online options that students could partake in. And it's unclear whether the Issaquah School District would be approved to, to do the same.
Well, I, I think I'm going back to what Suzanne said, because remember, my suggestion was before we had this last whereas that you just put in. So I think having that put in then can be our, we're not even. We're, we're not even approaching. Ideas around remote learning.
And actually, when you started talking about uncertainty, my brain went in a different direction, my brain went to. Um, the fact that we're not totally certain. That the stars are going to align in such a way that will allow us to have full-time school in the fall. And maybe we need to acknowledge that. Right. That, you know, and, and I don't know how exactly we want to say it, but there's certainly a possibility. If the virus goes sideways, or there's another emergency proclamation or something. Okay, fair enough. Right, because if the Department of Health comes back and says, you either all have to go remote again, obviously, we have to follow what the Department of Health.
It, it's as simple as it, if the Department of Health came out in, in late August and said, given. Current COVID status, you must maintain a six-foot distance, we're not doing full-time school.
Right. So could we maybe put it in the resolve where we say the school year fully open to in-person learning? To the extent allowed by health guidelines or state law or.
Yeah.
Something.
I mean, that will be the reality, so yeah.
Because I, I do want that caveat in there, the board can't just say, Ron, you will open. Right, there could be extenuating circumstances whereby you can't.
You could be telling me to violate the law.
And I don't want to do that.
I guess I would say it a little bit more proactively, like whether we were allowed to, but. Fully in-person learning barring.
Yeah.
Otherwise.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's good. And then I think we're gonna need to move on to the other resolution.
Two R's.
Two R's. Thank you. Yeah. Okay, so, okay, so go back. Okay, that, that school year fully open to in-person learning barring.
Action by the state or governor. Oh, that's even better.
Jake has all that bureaucratic language, it just flows right out of him, doesn't it?
And I apologize to the public watching, because there can't be anything more dreadful than watching. But at least this is. Five people try to wordsmith. I know. How work studies go. Usually watch a work study, so.
This is the work.
They really are this exciting.
And I think it's technically seven people trying to wordsmith, so.
Yeah, fair enough. Okay, so do we, are we? I think we're really close here. What I'm gonna do, I'm gonna, um. Yeah, once we, we'll work on the second one, and then Jake, I'm gonna send it to you for you, somebody. To, oh, I can send it to both of you to re- really read and see if there's anything like, that just on the fly doesn't make sense. Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Yeah.
And then ultimately, if the board's gonna consider it for action tonight, we'll want to post it.
Yeah, right. Right, and I think we do want to consider it.
Yeah, I think we have a plan to do that, yes.
And can, well, never mind, I was gonna say, can you send it to the whole board, but we'll do that after it's. Cause Diane's amazing, yeah. Okay, so, oh, I have an idea.
Yes, it is, Diane.
Yeah, cause we're doing another one.
And the other one's gonna be harder, so. So you guys, you guys, I'll put it, oh, let's see, I'm not sharing yet, let me share. Share. There we go. And I'll get sixty-three up. Okay, so we were doing the easy one first, but we only have fifteen minutes. While you guys talk about it, I'm, I'm not gonna listen to you, because I'm going to work on sending the, the first one to them. Okay. Okay, so don't, don't give me language to put into it, but you can discuss what's in there and. Okay. Okay, okay, so we have Resolution eleven sixty-three, uh, on program restoration parameters.
Yes.
Okay, and this was, I'm sorry, this was the one where Marnie pointed out that we usually provide, um. Budget parameters, but we didn't have parameters around how we would restore program. After a rift, and so we thought that that would be an appropriate thing for the board to do.
So.
Okay, and we have left, yeah, and, and basically, um, we don't actually have a resolution here, because that would be. Our parameters around board priorities for restoration of program. Right, so if the whereas is okay, because that's what just got us here. So that, I mean, if we had other whereas, as we could add, but the primary focus would be here on our director superintendent to restore. Well, and I think, I think the fourth, the fourth whereas, um, really leads into. My priority, which is, um. And, and the pri- the priorities are different, right, I mean, if you have, if enrollment goes up. Obviously, you have to restore teachers to keep your classroom, um, your class sizes. Level or, or consistent, but if we're getting additional money from the legislature acknowledging that. Hey, COVID was awful and you guys, guys didn't get as much S R money as you should, then my personal priority would be. To go right back to those counselors and mental health specialists that, you know, we promised people in the levy. And. Right, or, and or if the legislature allows anything that helps us. Maintain any kind of funding based on enrollment from prior years. But there's no legislation, is the only legislation about the, um, funding based on like the nineteen twenty. Um, enrollment, is that just for the levy? As far as. Oh boy, but they're not liking each other.
No.
No.
But, but their only disagreement is, is the Senate wants two years and the House wants one, so even if the House wins. For next year, we have those dollars, which is why you included them in your.
Yeah.
Estimate.
Yes.
But the Senate sent it back and said, we don't concur.
Right, and so if they don't figure this out.
So we will.
They could end up with nothing.
Yeah. Right.
I do.
Your, but you, in your example, if they were to fund us at the fifteen hundred per student, we don't have any more students. Than what you're projecting.
Right.
Right, we don't need to add certificated teachers for classroom, because we're already right-sized for where we estimate the number of. Students to teachers, but we could add back the program that we cut. So we want to leave you the flexibility as far as, I mean, if, if what we get are more funding because we have more students. Then we need more certificated classroom teachers.
It, which, that's just our normal, that's just what we normally would do, yes, in this case, there'd be a, a recall aspect.
Yes. But what we reduce, but we reduce both certificated classroom teachers and program. Right.
Right.
I, I think, I think those are the three what pieces in the whereas that is missing, whereas the. The majority of cuts for the twenty twenty-one school, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Were around certificated staff. Counseling and, uh, reserve balance. Right, because those are the three things we have to analyze, so when we're building back up, what we as a board need to decide is how we want you to build back up.
Yes, I mean, there was, there was a fair amount of cuts in teaching and learning services.
Well, and then administration.
Yeah.
I would probably put that under the, the fourth one is under administration, right, where we lost Dean's.
I mean, the, I, I, I will tell you what I thought, and I, I actually think this is, is a good idea in that, because it, it. It does mirror the budget parameter process we've done for years that had, had served us well. I, I envisioned the board looking at the list of program cuts that, that were, uh, you know. Discussed, approved in the, the resolution last Wednesday. And prioritizing the order in which you would like us to consider returning those program cuts. In the event that we get more resources. So, for example, you've got guidance counselor cuts in here, mental health counselors, do you have a preference over which ones you'd like to see come back first? Cause they're two different, two different. Line item cuts in there, that's what, that, that was kind of what I thought I heard the board kind of talking about.
Right, and that's still, even if we were to continue this sentence to saying directs to restore, you know, if we set in a priority order of. You know, mental health, then PBSCS, then guidance. That still leaves you the flexibility to weigh that against where we were mentioning the need to have the, um, fund balance. We did.
Yeah, yeah.
Which takes your superintendent out of compliance.
Out of compliance. So, so, and I think what you're talking about is what is more important to us, compliance with the fund balance? You know, or is that the board would give a one-year exception to the superintendent or a two-year exception to the superintendent? Around fund balance, so is it more important to get that unrestricted, unrestricted fund balance back up to three percent? Or would we say putting in programs will be a priority and we'll figure out how to build back our reserves after we do X, X, X?
Right, because we, we run the risk of, um, restoring program that we just have to cut the next year.
That, that, and that is a conversation that a lot of districts are having right now, Director Moore, as I've been talking with my colleagues. Really around the state, that there is a number of districts that are feeling they can avoid this this year. By spending down their fund balance, much the way we have done this year for next year, but there's many of them that are saying. What I'm really nervous about is twenty-two, twenty-three. So.
Right, and this, and, and the, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, no, Marnie had her hand up first, I think.
Actually, Sydney was first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, so I have a lot of thoughts on this, and for me, this was, this is the most important part of what we're doing, and. What I, what I think, as I went back and, um, looked at our communication and looked at what's here, I think. I think there's maybe for me a piece of this that's missing, and it may, you may say, because you're not understanding it, right, Sydney, but I'm gonna say it anyway. But the, the S R funds are really about replenishing COVID-related costs incurred by the district. We, I don't think we've been crisp enough in, in segregating the two issues we have, one is what we have. Had to absorb based on COVID-related cost in the year from what is a decrease in. Um, enrollment, right now, the way we're stating it and have been, and I read that in some of the feedback we got. Um, is it, we've left the, I believe we've left the impression that because we've had a drop in enrollment, all of these other things are true. Where it's really a compound problem of additional expense based on, um, COVID remediation, COVID. Impact and a drop in, in enrollment, right now, we're stating it is because we have a drop in enrollment, and I think it's not clear enough. So one, I think we have to, if, if I'm not inaccurate in what I just said, then I think we have to sort that out in the whereas to be a lot more crisp. That we've got more than one factor at hand of what's been drawing down on our fund balance. Um, because I think that'd be helpful, there's a lot of people calculating exactly how much is down and exactly how many teachers. But it, that is not the only factor, as I understand it, so I can be corrected in that, and then I think. How, why that matters to me is, as, as a restoral factor, I agree with you, Jake, in that. I, I think we need to restore like funds and program with what is meant to backfill them. So for example, if there is an increase to. Funding from a legislature that is about, um, you know, COVID impact, then that to me would go to fund balance. And we should be replenishing the expense we had against, you know, that we took out. If there's an increase in enrollment, and this is not exact, but I think enrollment is very different for me, which is about. Teachers, and then if there is, there was a third one, but then there's a different category that is the kind of teacher support and, and admin. So, because we have multiple unknowns and those unknowns, unknowns will become known at different times from different sources. Um, for me, it would make sense to be just a lot more crisp about what are the, what are the funds we're receiving meant to do? And if it's additional enrollment, then it should be to serve the student where, where they are. Oh, and then I think, I think for me, where I probably split a bit is in, um. Although you, you did send us the kind of ratios of decline in mental health supports, I think we've been unclear there as well. I think what we are, people are taking away is that not only are these cuts happening tomorrow, but that they are. Taking down those mental health supports to zero, so I think we have to get really clear that we're pulling back to. You know, twenty nineteen levels, which were augmented in some cases. Um, that has to get cleaned up a little bit, but I would, I would probably say there's. Where we can maybe restore all of the mental health counselors to twenty nineteen levels. I would take that, but on like maybe the S R funds or other like funds. But I do think dividing them out, which is what's the purpose of the fund and what's the kind of decrease we made? Would make it much more clear to the public that there's different factors at hand. And that different, different answers or different unknowns becoming clear will drive restoration of different program. Did that, that was long, did that make sense?
Yeah, so, and what I would hear you saying to try to get to more specific details about what we know legislatively. Would be that then your anticipation is that our S R dollars from the federal government, the six point some million that's coming in. Would be directed back to fund balance because we spent down, and I think it would be important, one thing that I've seen from Bellevue. Is that they've talked about what are their COVID costs that they have.
That's right.
Received over the past year. And I don't think, I, I don't know what ours is, I wouldn't be able to. And I don't think, I, I don't know what ours is. I wouldn't be able to tell somebody, you know, is it twenty million dollars? Is it five million dollars?
It's really squishy really fast because are you, is the loan decline a hundred percent COVID cost?
No. So I would be like, actually, what are we, what are we spending on COVID mitigation within the district? So. So yes, yes, absolutely.
Uh, are the extra teachers above and below the class?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, that's where it gets to be a little.
Right.
I think we could draw some bright lines.
Well, yeah, some of those, we would, we, we couldn't have cut those teachers regardless.
Right.
But I say.
But you hired additional.
The additional subteacher, that's a COVID cost. The, the cost of keeping employee groups on benefits while not being able to work would be a COVID cost.
Yeah, I mean, that, we had, uh, seven or eight million dollars at least. Now, that cost was already built into the budget, but it was driven by COVID and we lost work in that case. You know, both labor hours were never put in the district. They were paid for. But initially, I had to pay that. So that's another one. That's, is that a COVID cost? Maybe, but that was already built into your budget. So it gets very, and then COVID nineteen costs of your SR, there's only certain costs that are allowable. We can, we can get, or Chris, I think what I would advise you to do is about half of the reduction before you last week was given by right side of the simple staff ratio versus ten million dollars, right?
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
That money is basically paid, we paid for that staffing cost right out of the fund balance. I don't know. I think we should pay that back up. And then there's another ten, if the state, if the state comes through, we have a ten million to be planning program.
Would, which would get you back a lot of it.
Simple way to do it, um, because there is no.
That's right. I, I think, I, I, I think directionally correct is, for me, is enough, but I think what you went through, that piece of explaining the additional costs and additional drivers already consumed by the district that require drawdown of balance that are net additional to, um, drop an enrollment into the next year. We've not done a good enough job being clear on that, and we've got to call that out. Now, directionally correct, I think we just said, is, is more than enough someone can understand, hey, about half of that cost was a direct drawdown of fund balance for this reason. Do we have to get down to forty-eight cents and, you know, at the end? No. But right now, um, it, it's not clear enough. It's already six.
I was just going to say, it is already six. I would like to extend this conversation if we can, or do we want to start the meeting and come back to it when it's an agenda item?
Yeah. That's what I was going to suggest, that we, we should start.
Do on the agenda.
Start the meeting now, and then just continue this conversation when we get to that resolution. And maybe we don't, we don't have to start with a motion to pass anything. We could just continue a conversation.
Okay.
Because we may not be able to get all the right words, given some of the things I'm hearing.
Right.
Into this resolution for passage today, but there's no reason we couldn't ask the district to go back and rework some of the words. Because really, this is, we don't have to pass it today. We could also do this at the May meeting.
That's correct.
Right.
Uh, yeah, um, I, I believe we're going to get a state budget drop tomorrow.
Okay.
I have, I wish I had a, a crystal ball that told me what's going to be in that. Because if you think about it, they have to post that budget by Saturday, Sinodius Sunday. And there are some rules about how long they have to have that budget available. Um, so, so I, I do believe that's going to happen. I also believe that there's a possibility, because just I've watched politics for a long time, um, that they're gonna, the, the compromise, there's going to be some compromise in there. So, for example, the Senate proposal fifteen hundred, the House at zero. What if they come back with five hundred per student? So now you've got a chunk of money, you know, and I've been listening to my CFO, and he's going to say, well, that's the money I would put into fund balance.
Right.
You may not feel that way. You may want to, um, go a different direction. So it's really, it, it, and it, and it could happen relatively fast. Now, remember, we, yeah, so.
It took me, I, I would like to, you know, two hours to get on the bus before it's correct. It does take, does take a little bit of time to figure.
Let's go.
So could we, if the board waited until their May?
Well, why don't we just talk about it during our?
Yeah.
Think about what you want to tell us when we get to the item.
Yeah.
As far as your suggestion.
Too. Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we do a two-minute break before we, um, go to the meeting, the regular meeting?
You're, you're the board. Yeah, you're the president. You tell us what we're going to do.
We're going to do a two-minute break before we start the regular.
Okay.
Okay. And we're good. Okay, welcome to this meeting of the Isquah School Board for April 22nd. I apologize that we're starting a little late. The board was in a work study to discuss some upcoming resolutions, one of which is now attached to the agenda and the other of which we will discuss in more detail because we're not done. And I will start this meeting with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and next up, we have students from Liberty High School. And I believe Director Moore, you have introductions?
Yes, well, I had the opportunity to meet with the Liberty High School class and shared with them about coming to our board meetings. And so we have two students. We have Theo here and we have Tori on Zoom. So we're going to let you guys go ahead and introduce yourselves. I do not want to mangle your last name, so I didn't say them. And we'll let you introduce yourself and go ahead and share your input. And if Theo, yeah, you're going to go up to the microphone. And then after Theo will be Tori. And I don't know if somebody has to let her unmute or if she can do it herself. We'll work on that before it's her turn.
Okay, I think I'll just go first. Hi, I'm Theo Coop from Liberty High School. I'm the executive secretary. I will answer the question, if you could change something at your school or about your education, what would it be? And I'll give kind of like a little update on how Liberty students are taking the hybrid model. So speaking from a somatic view of my experience in ISD, one thing I would want to change about my education would probably be a continued commitment to the implementation of social emotional learning curriculum and increased exposure to other cultures in our elementary schools. But ISD is becoming an increasingly multicultural environment. So it is essential to make sure all students, especially those of color and of different cultures, feel comfortable from a young age with their identities. Speaking from personal experience, moving here from Korea in the third grade was not ideal. Students unfamiliar with my culture would comment negatively about the food I was eating and the language I was speaking and also do a wide variety of things that made me uncomfortable about my cultural identity. Although it was not done with malicious intent, it showcases perfectly why such education is needed for younger students. Without this early education and exposure, students will grow older lacking important knowledge that is essential in creating a safe environment for all students. Essential to this is also the adequate preparation of staff to deliver this curriculum. Otherwise, it would be possible that they would neglect to effectively implement it. Students will struggle in understanding their peers. In many cases, I showcased in one of my recent classes where a classmate tried to compare his experience getting made fun of playing rugby with the prejudice I faced growing up as an Asian American. Additionally, social emotional learning at a young age is proven to have lasting effects such as increased confidence, improved self-efficacy, parent commitment to school, reduce emotional stress and increase positive social behaviors and relationships with peers and adults. With early implementation of social emotional learning and cultural exposure, I think the ISD could cultivate a culture of acceptance that would be beneficial not only to students, but the community. And then we ran a quick survey on the Liberty Instagram about how students are generally feeling about going back to school. We asked three questions. First of being, what have been some positive slash negative change about negatives about going back in person? General student comments were, learning has been more effective. We're many students, easier to ask questions and focused with increased motivation. Students enjoy the more natural social aspects, but asking about the possibility of different alphabet division between students later in the year to allow different groups of students to see each other. They're also enjoying increased connection with teachers, but they're also saying that the lunch eating is optimal. Second question asked was, how is your online learning changed with the hybrid model? Generally, the outlook on that was negative. They said that there was less interaction between peers and with the teacher. Online students felt more isolated than usual from the teacher in class. There's also much less focus on the online students with teachers, focusing more on in-person students, which is to be expected, but still negative. They also felt less supported during remote classes as they weren't always able to hear the teacher as well or ask questions as immediately. And then lastly, classes are slower and longer with teachers having to switch between in-person and remote students. Last question was, what would you change about hybrid learning? Students said that many of them are hoping for some change to the current schedule. Those included different split groups such as the alphabet divisions I mentioned earlier and also more in-person days. Students don't exactly understand why they had to be split the way where they are, even if some kids are coming maybe like, or maybe some classes only had three kids in them versus some having 12. Secondly, some want more asynchronous lessons due to the lack of focus on online students. As online students don't really feel the need to actually be in the Zoom or class if they're not being supported by the teacher. They're also complaining about the significantly earlier start times. I believe earlier it was 8:15, now it's about 7:45. And 30 minutes isn't really a long time, but if you're a high schooler waking up at 7:45 in the morning, it's pretty late or pretty early. Also taking into consideration the amount of time it takes to get to Liberty, whether you're walking, taking a car, bus, things of that nature. So students will probably have to wake up around 6:45 to get prepared for school and get ready to go. And lastly, some offered actually some solutions to connect in-person and remote students. They suggested having in-person students join Zoom to make communication easier. They addressed the problems of not hearing each other and the teachers during the class. And lastly, they also suggested kind of a similar solution, but to have microphones set up throughout the class so that they could hear their peers during their class better. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. That's a lot of good insight for us. And Tori?
Hi, everyone. My name is Tori Cormier.
Oh, wait, we can't hear her. Hang on. You're unmuted, but something's not working. It may be on our end. It is, hang on. Can you try again?
Hello, can you hear me?
Much better, yes.
Okay, wonderful. Hi, everyone. My name is Tori Cormier. I'm a senior at Liberty High School and I am also Liberty's ASB president. I'm going to share something that happened in school that pushed me outside of my comfort zone, but ultimately made me grow as a person. I had this experience in an SEL lesson on microaggressions. After the content was delivered to us, my group discussed times when we ourselves had committed microaggressions and then victims of microaggressions shared their stories. It was a difficult, uncomfortable and emotional conversation, but one that was overdue and entirely necessary. I think there has been a lack of conversations or lessons in regard to equity, social justice and equality throughout my high school career. So having this lesson presented was really refreshing and one that was well received by myself and my peers. The use of SEL for this kind of teaching was something that I was personally really happy to see because it is critical to remain educated on equity and inclusion. Schools have an obligation to facilitate these conversations. This experience made me all the more mindful of the language I use and how I interact with my peers. It was a critical conversation to have and I'm grateful that my school gave me the opportunity to have the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And as you know, or I think you know, you're welcome to stay for the meeting as long as you want, participate in the conversations. We will see you on, one of them will flag me down if I'm not looking at you. And Tori, if you can use the hand raise thing, I won't necessarily see you, but hopefully Stephen will. Or I will, okay, I will see, never mind. Ann's going to keep track of it. Oh, are you still on Zoom? Oh, okay, never mind, we're good, we'll figure it out. So please do feel free to participate in the conversations. Okay, next on the agenda is public input. And I am going to suggest, because we do have agenda items further down the agenda on, well, a general education update, but more in point, the board is going to continue to have a discussion around reduction in forced restoration parameters. So if you have specific public input relating to the RIF conversation that we had at the last meeting, I'm going to suggest that you hold those comments for that agenda item because I think the board conversation may address some of that. But if we have public input on other items that are not on the board agenda, please raise your hands and I will recognize you. And it looks, I'm sorry, I do have trouble reading from here. It looks like Sydney Bays is the first speaker. And if you could please give us your name, the school attendance area in which you live, and I'll just remind you to keep your comments to two minutes. Director Moore will be timing and you'll hear a little ding dong when the two minutes is up. And remind you also just to please be civil and respectful in your remarks. So Sydney?
All right. Good evening. My name is Sydney Bays and I'm a teacher at Isiquah Valley Elementary. I want to take a moment and ask the community and district leadership to take some time to reflect something that I think is needed in order to help this community grow and hopefully slow down the fracturing of relationships and communication that I've been observing at a rapid pace. Last week, a lot of teachers learned that they would be losing their jobs, news that would be difficult for anyone, not just teachers. Then I heard this topic of shock arise during public comment, which was attached to blame. I was taken back by the insensitive timing of these comments that essentially told all of these teachers that they were to blame for losing their jobs and that they had no right to be shocked. Well, I wanted to talk about shock this evening. Shock is learning that my school community is set to lose 12 hardworking, dedicated and driven teachers, my colleagues. Shock is hearing the community month after month rake their skulls due to dissatisfaction with their reaction and opinions to COVID. Shock is hearing our school board make light of the thought of having to bargain about the fall over something as simple as masks. Shock is also hearing district leadership say that the funding that we received in comparison to another urban school district that serves a dramatically different community than Isiquah's was not equitable. These things deserve shock because they're unacceptable. Teachers didn't shut down schools last March. We were asked to do something that is out of our comfort zones and training and we rose to that occasion. We've listened to the fear and sometimes hysteria related to COVID. We've experienced the same restrictions as the community. We've tolerated the last minute information about school plans for closing, remote learning, reopening, hybrid learning, concurrent teaching, social distancing and more. Yet we're still here. We're still showing up to work either in a classroom or behind a computer screen. We're still supporting kids whose families chose to return in person and those who have chosen to remain remote. At the end of the day, we're people, just like you. Our jobs are different, often misunderstood and regularly underappreciated because we cover so many roles that are not known. Yet the role I will not stand for any longer is to be a punching bag or caught in a game of tug of war due to COVID and the many different points of view that remain in this city, this county, this state and this nation. I ask you all to please demonstrate your respect and practice empathy. Remember that people, especially those waiting to hear about their future employment, have feelings. They have emotions and deserve to be treated as people.
Thank you very much for your input. Next, I have Blakely Rickett.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you so much for letting me speak. And thank you to the teacher who just spoke. I have two kids at the Isiquah School District at Endeavor Elementary. And I just want to say to all the teachers, not just Endeavor Elementary staff and teachers, we are so grateful for the amazing work you're doing. We appreciate your bravery. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts, of our family and everybody that we know. I'm also so thankful to see our secondary students back, even though my kids are not at that age level yet. Bravo to all of you. I want to point out that as we tell our kids that to write a paper or to write a book report, the hardest part is doing the outline and getting that first paragraph started. So to all of you, you've done the hardest part. Thank you so much. We've got the ball rolling. Thank you to the board for being proactive on this. But I believe that now we can take it a step further, especially with our elementary students. Now is the time for them to be back full-time in school. There is no reason for them any longer to be only doing the half-days. We now know, if we put our science hats on for a minute and we tune out the media and we try to pare down some of our emotion exhaustion from this whole experience, if we will just listen to the facts, we know that these young children are not the spreaders. We know that they are really compliant in most cases. And we know that outdoor transmission is not a thing. It has come out now and now we have the science and the data to prove it. I'm not a doctor, I do work in biotech. I try to be a little bit informed as all the medical professionals out there. The temperatures are rising outside. We can have windows open more often. It is not an excuse any longer to say that it's because of lunch service. So I went and compiled some lists of some how we eat safely school plans of all the schools that I could connect with personally around the country and in our state, who are able to offer food service through their kitchens to do it safely, children remove their mask. I know that, I hear the beep. Let me just say that now is the time for us to learn what works, well, how we need to make adjustments and how we can lay the groundwork for the fall. This is a learning moment. We are here to partner with you. We're not against you. We love you, we support you. And please, let's do this for the benefit of our children. It doesn't matter how much time is left in the school year. Please, can we rally together and make this happen? I will do anything that I'm allowed to do to come as close on campus as I'm allowed to come. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. And our last speaker is Caitlin Schreiber.
Hi, thanks for giving, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak. So I hope you're not tired of me speaking, but I just, I want to give a shout out to, to our district school board and teachers and everybody else for the start of secondary last week. It was a really, really exciting day. It had been over a year and it was really, really great to see our students back in school. I have two high schoolers at Skyline and one's a senior. And it's just so great to know that he's going to be able to be there. Right now, he's going to be there for 16 days before he graduates. And you know, that's better than nothing. I'm excited that he's there. So I know it's such a huge lift to be able to change things so quickly. Just as Sydney Bay said before, there's been a lot of, everyone's had to be so flexible this year. So anyway, I do really, really appreciate it. But I just wanted to bring up two things. The first one is, we need to get our kids into four days of school. I keep thinking about my senior. As of now, he'll have 16 days before he graduates in school. And I just keep thinking, 16 days, wow. It would be so great if he could have, if there could be 25 days for these seniors and high schoolers and middle schoolers too. It would make such a huge difference. My math might not be right, but it would make a huge difference to have those extra days in school. I know that there are case counts that are tied to the MOU. It seems that the Department of Health in King County is kind of changing the way they're counting the case counts and metrics. So please just take a look at that and see what we can do to get those kids back. It has been such an incredible opportunity for them to be there. The last thing I just want to talk about is the optional choice that secondary students have to go back to school. As any parent of teens know, this is a really hard thing for our teenagers. I remember when I first met our Skyline principal a couple of years ago, Principal Henig, at a coffee with Keith. He mentioned that kids take the path of least resistance. And now that I have two teenagers, I realize that's true and a lot of other teenager, parents of teenagers will realize that's true. Teenagers will take the path of least resistance. And if it's easier to stay home or easier to do something, that's what they'll do. So please look into requiring kids to come to school just like it would be a normal day. It's just too hard to be changing back and forth so much. I just hope that there can be a way to look at that again and to change it. Anyway, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes. We, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned this. We don't normally respond to public input. It's the public's opportunity to, but yeah, go ahead.
Speaking for students, now responding to the last comment. I think general consensus is that students enjoy being back in school, but then they still feel that it's essential to have a remote option just because of personal, personal safety, home situation, things of that nature. But yeah.
Yeah, and I agree with you. We know that there are a lot of different reasons that kids choose to stay home from school. And I apologize, I should have mentioned at the top of the meeting that Dr. Gallinger is not here at the moment. He had an unavoidable work conflict and he does hope to join the meeting sometime before we're done. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. And I understand, Mr. Thiele, that there are a couple of changes to the consent agenda?
Yes. On line item number 10, we had an incorrect date when it first went out. So that date correction has now been made. So that, that was the one change. And then the second change was line item 15. And it, it was a change, when we originally put it out, it said new employees and actually what it should have said was supplemental contract employment. And so that change has been made as well.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So I move the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Second?
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Establishment of the regular agenda. I believe, I think we're going to leave it alone for now with the possibility that if our discussion on resolution 1163 goes long, we will bump the discussion of EL 12. I'm going to also suggest that we do the same thing on the regular agenda that we did on the work study and flip the two resolutions because I think we can dispose of 1164 quickly and then spend our time in 63. Is that okay with people? Is that okay with you?
It's fine with me and I have no other changes.
Okay, so that's what we're going to do. So as I said, okay, so work, study, review. As I said at the top of the meeting, the board spent the work, study time reviewing two possible resolutions. 1163, reduction in forced restoration parameters. We have not finished our discussion of that and we will continue to the discussion during the regular meeting. And resolution 1164, which is the Fall 2021 Teaching and Learning Modality Plan. I believe that we settled on a resolution which is now attached to the agenda and we will be discussing that as agenda item number four. Did I capture that? Any other comments, corrections? No, we're good. Okay. Report out on school improvement plans. So the board, I don't remember the dates and I don't know if they're on here. Are they? But see, oh, there we go. Okay, so the board held four meetings to review our school improvement plans. We held on February 25th, we reviewed the middle school school improvement plans. On March 4th and March 18th, we reviewed the improvement plans of our 15 elementary schools. And on April 1st, we reviewed our high school school improvement plans. And, oh, and I guess I should have asked for a motion.
Okay, I move the board approve the 2021 school improvement plans for each ISD school as presented.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I don't know if we want to spend a little time discussing this. I know personally, I was, we did it a little bit differently than we normally do because normally we talk a lot about test scores and plans to improve our reading scores or our math scores or whatever. And this was more about, we had a pandemic and we had to pivot into a completely different way of teaching and how did we communicate with families and how did we make sure that kids didn't get lost in the shuffle? I personally was incredibly impressed by the number of administrators and teachers who were going the extra mile to the point that they were actually driving to students' homes to deliver class materials. Just so much great work being done behind the scenes.
But I think for us, it was really important for staff, for teachers to know where is this student at? What I think was a result of that in some cases was a much more differentiated education. We've talked about what that would look like. And I think in this case with remote learning, it kind of had to happen that way for teachers who are thinking about each student in a different way, what's being successful for this student. So I appreciate that hard work on the part of our staff to really dive into that. And then to be able to talk about the multi-levels of, you know, multi-tiered support. So again, that in order to do that MTSS work, in order to know what tier should this student be on, you have to know the student. And so I think what has happened is a real need to be student focused and appreciate that that is the viewpoint of the teachers and that the district is behind getting to know each student. And so I think that I kind of felt that that was a lot of the work that they were doing is about the individual student and I appreciated that.
And I think too, when, when you have a teacher potentially looking at a lot of black squares on a Zoom screen, it is so difficult to know who's engaged, right? I mean, you can see the little faces of the kids who are really engaged. The black squares, they might be engaged, they might have gone back to bed. And then you've got some squares that just aren't even there. So that was a lot for teachers to unpack this year and Sydney.
I don't know why that was so funny. I think you hit on one of the things, you know, since I, since I started on the board for me has been really important is this idea of engagement. How are we connecting? Who are we connecting with? Are we spending that time to get to each and every student, not just the ones who traditionally are participating and present all the time. And so I really, I really felt through these conversations, just a different level this year than even last of, of the additional planfulness and clarity of reach to make sure we could locate, find, connect with, understand the reasons behind. Maybe those, those young folks who weren't connecting and creating individualized plans. And so for me, with that engagement point to, to each student, it's just always been so important to me. So that was just amazing to hear school by school. I, I think the other thing, we get a lot of email as a board that asks the question of, you guys don't even know what's really happening. You, you, you're not connected. You don't, you don't know. You don't even know what goes on. And I think that one, I, again, I sit in a classroom now less days per week. Thank you. But I've been in elementary, middle school and high school classrooms every day for the past 14 months. But I think that this really represents the amount of hours we spend collectively on understanding what is going on, building by building, question by question. And I just can't underscore more for folks who are, I guess skeptical of how in touch or out of we may be, that this school improvement plan review really represents many hours of us digging into not only the data, but the people's stories behind what's happening building by building.
And to add on to that, I have yet to hear about another district in the entire country that does this for every school. I, I mean, I've talked to people across the nation and I've never heard of another school board that does this.
Well, and we didn't used to. We used to review a handful of schools and just say, oh yeah, and there are the other ones. I mean, we would review the, the written reports, but we wouldn't meet with staff. And I think, I think it was the board's choice to say, no, we really want to hear from all the schools. This is valuable information. And we want the schools to hear from each other. So, and to Sydney's point, it is a lot of time. It was four meetings, each of which went two to three hours. So 10 to 12 hours of our time. I think it's extremely valuable time and I hope it's valuable for the administrators. I know some of them are slightly terrified, but.
Well, that I was going to add on to that, but yeah, I think actually it really was, it, it appeared from the administrators engagement with us that it was valuable because they got to hear from each other, things that they were trying, tactics they were using to reach out to all students and connect with them. And they got to hear from each other how they were doing that. And so I really do think that there's great value for them as well. And then we get to be a part of that and we learn a lot about what's going on in those schools during these times. So it was very good. Very useful time. Yeah.
And just lastly, really quick, I think what was good for me was hearing some of those engagement stories. And I think that, you know, there are members of the community that have written us saying we don't, we're out of touch. But what I really think is some of the emails that I've received is that there is an idea of who, and I think I even heard tonight, there's an idea of who everybody is in this district based on a socioeconomic generalization. And that is not true for every student. And so to hear some of those stories, to hear about, oh, this child kept, you know, it isn't doing well in school because they don't sleep at night because they don't have a bed and they sleep on the floor. People don't think that happens in this district and it does. And so I, that was, it's important for us to be reminded of those stories of just how widespread the gap is for some of our families. And that not every family here took a vacation to Hawaii over spring break.
Well, and the fact that so many staff members went above and beyond the call to really make sure that their students were engaged and reached out and worked with counselors, literally drove to students' homes. I mean, you, you hear a story like that, you think, oh, it's a one-off. And it wasn't. They were almost each and every school had somebody who was stepping up to the plate like that.
Reaching out to the students to get their engagement in school, but it was to help families with whatever they needed to survive this pandemic. I mean, to the extent that they could provide them the support they needed, they were out there doing that, whatever it was. Because unless you meet those underlying basic needs, you can't get the kid engaged in school because it's just not where they're at. So it really was heartening to hear all the stories about how much work the staff did to reach kids and families.
And I, I still liked the one school that had all the kids doing their reading time, reading to the stuffed animal. That was great. That was a brilliant idea.
Like the bear buddy or something, something like that.
That was awesome. So a lot of creativity out there in a scary kind of year. So we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Superintendent Thiele, education COVID-19 update. I heard that secondary went back to school.
Yes, yes. Before I jump into that, I did just want to note and piggyback a little bit on what Director Moraldo shared. I want to be clear, people. We partnered, that school partnered with other entities in our community to make sure that that family got that bed that they needed. So I think that's an important part of this. And we have some amazing other organizations out there that are willing to work with us and support us. Our Schools Foundation, our PTSAs, our service groups, Kiwanis, Rotarians, a lot of people stepping up influence the choice. We just have some amazing, the garage. I could go on and on. I tell all the amazing organizations we have. And when we partner together, we were really powerful in delivering services. And, and Director Moore, you're right. And in education, you know, we refer to Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And you know, you gotta, you gotta address those base needs. And selfishly, I've always said, we have to address those because then I know I have a student that's ready to learn and I can get the academic outcomes that I want. So anyway, thank you for that opportunity. And yes, President Weaver, I am absolutely, it's an absolute pleasure of mine to report that since last Thursday, we have had an in-person learning option available to our students in grades preschool through 12th grade in the ISD. So yes, a lot of hard work on everybody's part to do that. So big thanks to all of our, all of our staff, really K-12, but specifically now to a big thanks to our secondary students, staff and families for helping us have a successful return to in-person learning. I can say families and students have done a very good job completing the daily health attestation. So we can get our school day started in an efficient and timely manner. It's actually a big deal when you think about, you know, 500 students and maybe 100 staff in a large high school, all having to go through that process in order to get your day started. So really appreciate the efforts of our students and their families to make sure that they're coming to, to school with that already taken care of. So we can officially, efficiently get things started. Also, thanks to everyone, particularly the staff and students for following our COVID mitigation procedures because that is critical to our ongoing success. This is so important in our efforts to keep our schools open and eventually expand our in-person opportunities. I'm also pleased to report that we have a tentative agreement with the Issaquah Education Association regarding in-person learning for our students at the Echo Glen Juvenile Detention Facility. Some in our community not, may not be aware that for over six decades, we have operated a school inside that facility up there in North Bend. And it, we are just so happy that those students will also have an in-person learning opportunity, actually starting tomorrow. This has been, it's been particularly complicated, given all the parties that, that play a role in the operation of Echo Glen. We've been working closely with the Department of Children, Youth and Family Services, OSPI, obviously the Issaquah Education Association, and I am very grateful to all parties for their efforts to get an in-person option for these students. And as I said, oh, and Echo students will begin a four-day-a-week in-person schedule starting tomorrow. So we're very, very grateful for that and excited for those students. There was some reference to it in some of the public input, but we have been monitoring the daily COVID rates for King County very closely. We have seen the recent uptick in cases per 100,000 residents. I know that Governor Inslee spoke to some of this today in a, in a press conference as well regarding the whole state. For the past two days, our cases have gone over the 200 per 100,000. These numbers do not affect our current schedules and what we're currently doing. But if they continue to rise, it could impact our ability to expand offerings. So I think this is a good time to remind everyone that we still need to keep our mitigation efforts front and center, such as getting vaccinated. I would strongly encourage anyone who's eligible to do so, wearing a face covering and staying home when you're not feeling well. That is another very critical component of this. I know our, our culture, our American society often values, you know, toughing it out, if you will, you know? This is during a worldwide pandemic is no time to tough it out. If you're not feeling well, please, please do stay home. Because the likelihood is it's not COVID, but we certainly want to keep all sickness out of the buildings to the extent possible. Keeping case rates low is critical towards our efforts to getting back to more normal schooling. I did want to note that our, we, we do have a situation in which our LRC2 students, those are students who receive specialized instruction, special needs students have a four-day-a-week in-person option and reports back to me are, is that that is going very well. And so very, very happy for those students. I also am, yes.
Can I just ask to clarify now, do they go all day?
I believe that's true, Director Moore. Yeah. Cause it's at the secondary level, yes, because it's an all-day at the secondary level. But I have to confess, I don't know exactly what that schedule is, but I'm, I'm looking down at Deputy Superintendent and he's nodding his head, yes.
Right. So but if at the elementary, they still just go in the morning or?
Nope, I just heard from the gallery in the back, that's all day as well.
They're all day as well. Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's great.
And that is really critical for, for our efforts to, in educational recovery efforts for those students as well. So we, you know, and, and I'm also very pleased to report families who have a child receiving LRC1 Special Education Services should have received a message today announcing a four-day-per-week in-person option beginning next week. So our LRC1 students will also have that, that same option beginning next week. We're very excited about this expansion and our ability to better serve these students. I, I do want to give a shout out to our Executive Director of Special Services, Dr. Dana Bailey and her team. Because she and her team have been unrelenting in, in pushing our system to find ways to better serve this population of students. And so it's a, it's a joyous day for her to be able to say that we've been able to provide that opportunity for all of our special needs students, LRC1, LRC2. Our student athletics and activities continue to go very well, considering the unusual manner in which we've had to bring back these opportunities during this pandemic. Special thanks to all of our athletic directors and coaches and everyone else involved in making these important opportunities happen for our students. I know that for many of our students, the ability to attend an athletic practice or do, do something with other students in terms of an activity or club has just been critical for their wellbeing as we transition towards a more normal public school experience. So you know, I know some people, we've got, received some criticism early on that why are you working so hard to create these types of activities when you should only be focused on getting schools open full-time and the like? But I will tell you, as a parent and somebody who's been in, in school, the school world for over three decades, those opportunities are very important to students, whether it be some type of an activity that they're able to be involved in or an athletic team. It really does mean a lot. And you know, I had a mentor years ago tell me that yes, you'll get criticized, you know, some in our society don't even believe that it's appropriate for public schools to be in the business of providing athletics and the like. But I've also had others tell me it's probably, certainly at the high school level, one of the cheapest dropout prevention programs we can offer. So I'm a big advocate for it. I like to see kids get involved in all kinds of things, whether it be the arts, athletics, community service. I just think it's, it's good for our students to be involved and it does good things for our overall community. So I'm just very appreciative of all those efforts. And I have to say, it just brings me a little bit of joy when I watch the evening news at, at night and I see the, the local sports reports, especially if they talk about an Issaquah school, but just seeing it happen for, for students all around our, our state and region, I think is, is wonderful. I also, I just really have to acknowledge the really outstanding work of all of our COVID building supervisors and our central office COVID supervisors, including Deputy Superintendent Dr. Almi and my cabinet level staff, who are all playing a critical role in our COVID mitigation efforts, including working directly with public health when we learn of suspected or confirmed cases of COVID somewhere in our system. They're all working well together to address situations immediately as they come up. Yes, we are seeing some cases of COVID, but not at an alarming rate. They are all being, and I believe they are all being appropriately addressed as well. You know, we, we now are probably between students and staff serving somewhere between 11 to 13,000 people are interacting on a daily basis in and out of this system. And while we are, as I said, seeing a few cases, we're not seeing spread as a result of, of being in school. Most of these cases, when you go back and our team does the contact tracing, it's traced back to some event that happened outside of school, mostly contracted by another family member and the like. So and as you are, as you know, the person who was our point person, Assistant Superintendent Lisa Heckman has now left the district. And so we had to disperse that work and they've just done a wonderful job picking that ball up, if you will, at a time when we were greatly expanding the number of people that were coming in building. So yeah, I'm just very, I'm very thankful to, to all that work that they're doing. And, and then lastly, I'll just say, all in all, it just feels really good to see our Issaquah buses all around the district, transporting our students to and from school. Staff and students seem mostly very pleased to be back in person. Thank you to our Liberty students for sharing some of the insight and perspective of some of those, their, their, their student colleagues. And I, I just truly believe that being back in person together, teaching and learning is just collectively good for our community's emotional wellbeing. So that's all I had to share tonight. And then of course, any questions?
Okay, so I think before I go to board questions, I will see if there's any public input on this topic. And I see one. Kimberly Brown.
Hey there. Thank you for the chance to speak. My name is Kimberly Brown and I have kids at IVE and Apollo. And as a parent of elementary students, I've been kind of waiting my turn to talk about the next step for elementary because I wanted our secondary kids back in the classroom, but now they are. I really, I want to echo earlier comments. I super appreciate the hard work that's been done to get us to where we are today. I think that big first step is the hardest step often. And I'm grateful that we're adjusting plans for fall through board resolution tonight. Is the hardest step often, and I'm grateful that we're adjusting plans for fall through board resolution tonight. But I'm honestly not done advocating for the rest of spring. I believe it's critical that we need to expand our elementary kids to a full day of school this spring. We have had three grade bands return. Our elementary schools are at their new normal. They've worked through their kinks. And I think they're ready to address the next challenge. Our class sizes today are smaller than we can expect them to be in the fall. We have fewer staff and students in the building and we should use that time to figure out how to navigate lunches, staff rest periods and all the other myriad of challenges that a full day of on, in-school learning entails. We need our staff, our students and our families to have the opportunity to learn now and be confident that we can do it with bigger class sizes and five days a week in the fall. Without making that progress now, I do fear we're going to be stuck over the summer months bargaining on, bargaining on whether it's even possible. And failing the objective of full-time learning in, in the fall. And I also worry about working on all of those kinks in the fall when we're all going through these delayed standardized testing requirements that have been moved to fall. The emergency proclamation from the governor says all school districts must continue to work to exceed the 30% minimum instructional hours. And must reach the school's maximum capacity and maximum frequency of on-campus in-person instruction. That the school can provide when all health and safety recommendations and requirements are met. And it just doesn't seem like our school, elementary schools are at maximum frequency for the orders. I know that there's less than two months left and I know that some people will say that change is super hard and we should be thankful. And I want to reiterate. I am so incredibly thankful. My second grader comes home with a giant smile on her face four days a week and she just wants to be there for a longer day. But I really think it's imperative we expand so that we can prove to ourselves it can be done successfully and then safely. So we can build on the success for fall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And seeing no other hands, I'm going to move to board questions or comments. Anne.
So how are we doing on getting elementary school back to four-day, full day? I know where it's already going four days, but it's only half day. So where are we with our next priorities? I know we worked hard to get the secondary and we did. Echo Glen was important. Getting our more time for the special needs students. But now it sounds like we've done that. So what's next? Can we get those elementary school kids back in four days, four full days?
That would be the next conversation that we would be having with our labor groups. Yes. But you're, you're correct, Director Moore. We did have a number of things that we had to take care of first to complete. You know, the, the return of our secondary students, obviously, and, and getting our Echo Glen students in and the like. But the good news is we, we have done, we've completed all that work. And again, congratulations. I have true gratitude to all the parties that were involved in that, to our, our labor unions and to my team who just had put in countless hours. Getting all of these MOUs and you need only look at our website and see how many MOUs have been negotiated since last spring. And it's pretty remarkable. But, so that would be next in the queue. Those conversations haven't started, given that we just literally finished up Echo Glen, I think two days ago. And so. But that would be the next, next line of, of questioning. The only thing that causes me some pause, I will say right now, is I don't like the fact that these case numbers are going up. I did learn, I think it was referenced in public input, that the state might be including different COVID testing, the, the. The rapid tests now in their data sets. So that may be partly what's changing the number. But I also have heard from public health and I know the governor noted in his press conference today. There are some variants that are out there spreading and stuff as well too. So we do have to watch that. And again, it's like I said in my remarks, it's a reminder to us all to do the things that we, we know. That we have proven to ourselves that work to mitigate this. Keep doing that. Keep getting vaccinated. Keep up with the, the mask wearing and the like, because honestly, I think the. The easiest way for us to accomplish the goal that the board was discussing in the resolution and will be discussing here into getting back to, to full days. Is really keeping those numbers down, because really it's about that, that physical distancing and are we comfortable with three feet versus six feet? And I think we do need to remind ourselves that we do have a, a fairly significant percentage of our families. That they're still not comfortable sending their child into our schools yet. So. While I understand the desire and I, and I frankly share the desire and believe that we, we could do this and, and should be working to expand opportunities. For many of the reasons that we just heard. We, I, I don't want to discount the feeling of those in our community, in some cases, in some of our schools, over 50%. Who still aren't comfortable. So we have work to do to prove to people, we can do this. I do think it does make some sense though, for us, as, as we try to expand these programs to get some practice doing that.
But as far as the elementary, we already have the committed families that want their kids in school. So, you know, having, having these kids go all day isn't one of those where we're, we're actually trying to convince more people to come back. Cause it would be the same students.
No, it's true. It's, it's having, helping the staff feel comfortable as well with the, you know, with the longer day. The, the real element that comes into play when you extend the elementary day is lunch service. That's something that we're currently not doing at the elementary level. Now, we're learning from doing that at the secondary level, but as you know, it's a little different when you're talking about 12 to 18-year-olds. Versus five to 10-year-olds and, and how they can, how they have to be managed and supervised during lunch. There are some examples recently that are just happening, because a lot of your school districts that have been even in for a long time. Some that we went and visited to emulate, they're still not doing lunch at school. There's just now starting to be some districts that are serving lunch at elementary. And of course, we're one of the districts serving lunch at the secondary. So there, there are some models that we're watching, I guess is what I would say. And communicating with those districts, how's that going? So yeah, I, I understand that that is, and I hear, and I've heard that from the community and the board, that there is absolutely a desire and. I and the cabinet share that desire to try to expand these opportunities. So we've got work to do there and those conversations are just getting underway.
So of course, this is the question. So thanks for the input on that point. There, there is a difference, right? At, at the lower grades with extending the day, adding in more services like lunch. At the, at secondary though, we're doing two full, two full days. So I guess my question is, is, at what point can we look at the. I guess daily attendance of those choosing to come back to determine we would offer. The other two days to those who've already started to return. So I guess there's a couple of things in there, like the approximate attendance to date, realizing we just started. But how would we go, how will we go about determining that we're ready to say, okay? We're at a certain level and we would open it up to the, the students that are coming back two days a week to fill the four days.
Yeah. So we are monitoring the daily attendance of, of our return to in-person learning. And, and one of the things I can report, and you'll recall when we did our initial secondary survey. We heard from seven, approximately 74% was the average of families who said that, yes, they would want their child to return to in-person. We have not had that large of a number at this point send their children. It's, it's really living somewhere between 50 and 60%. And, and I don't, it, it, the numbers have moved a little bit. Keep in mind, we had the first cohort come in last Thursday and Friday. They were, they came back today for their second time. And so we're, we were able to kind of monitor those numbers. Fairly consistently, at least initially, and, and at the high school level, the, the numbers are a little higher at the middle level. At the high school level, they're a little lower. And again, they, they, they seem to be floating somewhere between 50. 50 to 60% of those who had requested in-person. So we have some capacity. In a way that actually has made it a little easier for us to bring back, for example, the LR, to create that space for our LRC one students. So we just really didn't know coming right out what the numbers were going to look like. And there was some concern frankly, that in some classrooms, we actually may have started. Not a, you know, over capacity and would have to move some students out of the classroom and put them in a separate space and stuff. To my knowledge, I don't believe that has happened yet. And in fact, I get reports that some of the classes, the in-person classes are quite small. So I, I think there's an opportunity for us to start engaging in that conversation. We haven't at this point, Director Mullings, simply because we've only been in session for, for a few days with, with these groups, but. Clearly we know that that is a desire of, on the part of the board and, and many in the community to. If we have the opportunity and it's appropriate to do so, to expand options and opportunities for students.
Yeah. And certainly the, the ability to expand LRC one and LRC two is critical at four days. So that's, that's a, that's a great point for sure.
Yeah. And so we're, we're going to keep watching those numbers. I know I just, I'd only had, had a chance. Actually Executive Director Hood has shared numbers with one of the high schools with me earlier today, but. That is something, you know, we've been trying to monitor that, but we're going to do a hard look at those numbers. Next week, because we'll have had each group will have been in a couple of times and then we'll have that opportunity to check that.
I think the other question I have is broadly titled Wednesdays. So I think, at lea, at least I believe the early conversation about Wednesdays when we went down. This path was really about turnaround time for cleaning in the schools. And so we needed to make sure we had some time with, with. People out of the buildings, thorough clean to, to meet COVID mitigation. I guess one, I want validation, but that is still really the, the purpose of not using, not utilizing the Wednesdays in the building. And then also, I would say a lot of the feedback that I hear, that I receive is that Wednesday's become a sort of lost day from folks. And so. You know, one, I guess on the cleaning and then two, what do we, what can or should we be doing about the validity of learning on Wednesdays?
There's, there's a lot in there. One of the other, just to kind of back up a little bit, and you're absolutely right. It was about that break in the middle of the week. To do, do a deeper cleaning, to also provide teachers an opportunity to do some of the uploading of their, in, into their. Learning management system and their, their recorded lessons back when we were in the ISD live. And. So that, that had to do with the original Wednesday schedule. But I, you know, I'm of the mind that Wednesday is a school day. And when the board considers their resolution and when I hear the board say return, to me, that's five days a week. I know there's been this discussion about four, four days a week, but I'm, I'm targeting five days a week. We still have our, our, our modified Wednesday calendar as part of our collective bargaining agreement to provide collaborative and professional development time. And additional support time that would be in existence where, where we're operating under a collective bargaining agreement that will go through next school year as well. But yeah, Wednesday, you know, it, it has kind of, you know, that maybe some of the original purposes that were based on our understanding of COVID at that time as well. May not be as applicable today. And so, you know, I think it has to be on the table for our discussions. But yeah, right now, now I will say, I was encouraged a little bit tonight. When I heard student input reference some SEL lessons happening at the high school level, which would be happening in that timeframe. So. I know that it is, you know, we're, we do have a bit of a challenge in that, again, it's remote. And I've clearly stated, I don't believe remote is as effective as in-person. But I think another challenge that we have probably more so at the high school than the middle school level is. You know, having had teenagers at one time in my life. Getting them to engage in social emotional learning conversations can be a little more challenging. I was thrilled to hear that public input that a student tonight said, boy, I wish we'd had conversations like this earlier in my, my experience here in the district. So I don't know, I see Deputy Superintendent Almi has gone to the podium. I think he may have something to add about this particular topic. Is the, I don't think your mic's on, Josh.
Thank you Superintendent Dealey, Joshua Almi, Deputy Superintendent. I was just going to add that on the Wednesday, it has also been a time all year long where students, especially at the secondary level, middle and high school. Can set up Zooms with their teachers to get extra help, especially when they're on a hybrid, for example, when they might be not there for the other three days a week. They're able to, so they can't go there after school and whatnot, but they're able to set up Zooms and get additional help with teachers. I know that a lot of teachers that I've talked to and principals have said, especially at the secondary level, that that Wednesday time has been used quite a bit for that.
So I'm, I'm happy to hear that as well, but I also recognize what, what you had heard, what you've heard too, that for some students, it, it feels like lost time. I, I understand that.
I think maybe there's an opportunity, because I think you bring up a good point about what we may be traditionally experienced as late start, early dismissal. And which shrunk Wednesdays, the, the cleaning piece, I just think there's an opportunity to maybe do a little restatement or refresh on Wednesdays. Of what services, to your point, Dr. Almi, what services our students should be accessing, accessing on Wednesdays. That it is sort of by even our old design, a shorter day because of professional development and, and the benefit of SEL. I think it's, I guess, at least in the conversations I'm having, it's becoming a little charged, like what happened to Wednesday. And so there's probably account, student accountability for what they're doing and engaging on Wednesdays and probably some parent accountability. For what they're helping or knowing that they should be engaging in on Wednesdays. And, and the restatement of like in the building, what it's about. But I think we, we have an opportunity to address. Wednesdays and reinvigorate what we expect is happening from a, a, a learning perspective on Wednesdays.
Fair point.
Yeah, I would agree with that, because it, it does feel like Wednesday's just sort of got lost in the shuffle. And I do understand that there are certain things like SEL and extra support that, that are expected there. But I agree with Sydney that that whole concept of we must deep clean the building before the next group of kids come in. I think that's not really supported by the science as much.
Yeah, that's part of what has changed in our understanding of this virus and, and how it spreads. And so, yeah, some of that. Some of that original need may not be the same that we thought that it was. And it's a point well taken that. It, it, it's not as if Wednesday, I don't view it as completely lost time, but I, I agree that we need to help communicate the value of that time better. And, and somebody may disagree with us and say, well, that's, you're, you're saying that has value. That doesn't have value for me. But at least articulating, you know, what it is. We had to do a, I have, I'm. Jody and I are probably about the only two that were here when we originally started to modify our Wednesday calendars way back when. And we had to do that. A lot, because people, it was so new to people. They just didn't understand. What do you mean? You're, you're, you're starting later, going home two hours early every Wednesday. Where does that come from? And we did a lot of efforts and I think over time, we've just kind of assumed that people understood that and, and certainly probably the same thing happened this year. Whereas we came out of the gate explaining Wednesdays well, but we haven't talked a lot about it since then.
Awesome. Thank you.
Oh, yes, sorry. No, I was looking over at the board and they were pointing over there and I was confused.
Yeah, I'll kind of just echo the Deputy, Deputy Superintendent's sentiments about students and how they kind of view the time on Wednesdays. I do agree at the start. That it kind of sets, feels like Wednesday's kind of just, you know, whatever. But I think as the school year progressed, it kind of developed in some kind of more of a, a time for social engagement. So for example. Specifically on Wednesdays, I don't know if you know Miss Munson, my ASP advisor, she's at the time specifically for teachers engaging with students in a variety of activities. So. Kind of like a chess tournament during the lunch or like knitting class, I don't know. But also the point that. It's been a good time for students to connect with teachers, not just in the classroom, but on a more personal level. Through tutoring, like my, Cal teacher uses that time very wisely before the quizzes and tests every single Thursday to use Wednesday really effectively. So I think that while at the start, I think your assessment of that is correct. I think as it's developed, at least in my school, it's become more focused and kind of meaningful in a way that has developed, but I also agree that. If that's to be replicated at each school, it should probably be more, I guess, defined by the district.
Thank you for that. Any other comments or questions from the? Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay. We are, what did I say? We are going to move to Resolution 1164, which is the Fall 2021 Teaching and Learning Modality Plan. It is now attached to the agenda. Oh, it's very long. Okay, so the deal here is that we read it into the record and then we take a motion. Is that what I heard? Yeah, okay, we're nodding. All right, let me take a shot at this. If I get tired, I'll let you finish. Okay. A resolution of the Issaquah School Board, School District Board of Directors for a Fall 2021 Teaching and Learning Modality Plan. Whereas, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, on March 13th, 2020, Governor Inslee signed Proclamation 20-09, ordering statewide K-12 school closures from March 17th, 2020 to April 24th, 2020. And whereas, on April 6th, 2020, Governor Inslee signed Proclamation 20-09.1, extending school closures through the end of the 2019-2020 school year, with exceptions for students with disabilities and English language learners for whom distance learning would present challenges. And whereas, the Issaquah School District, in collaboration with its labor partners, implemented and adhered to the health and safety guidelines according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, Washington State Department of Health and Labor and Industries. And whereas, the district began the 2020-21 school year in a remote teaching model with exceptions for students with disabilities and those for whom distance learning would present challenges. And whereas, in the 2020-2021 school year, the district has been provided flexibility by the State Board of Education and the Washington State Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, OSPI, to collect full apportionment while students were learning in remote or hybrid settings. And whereas, on March 15th, 2021, Governor Inslee signed Proclamation 21-05, Children and Youth Mental Health Crisis, ordering schools to begin providing both remote online instruction and on-campus in-person instruction. And the district offered in-person options to all students in accordance with said proclamation. And whereas, in March and April 2021, the district offered opportunities for all staff to receive the COVID-19 vaccine, and the district administered approximately 3,400 shots. And whereas, King County continues phasing back to pre-COVID-19 status. And whereas, although staff have created a sound and supportive remote learning model, the board believes that in-person learning provides the greatest opportunity for students' academic success and social emotional well-being. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Directors of the Issaquah School District that the 2021-22 school year fully open to in-person learning barring regulatory prohibition. In addition, the board wants to pursue changes that would be necessary for the district to allow for remote school opportunities in response to emergency issues. Adopted and approved by the Board of Directors of Issaquah School District Number 411, King County, Washington, in an open public meeting of the Board of Directors held this 22nd day of April 2021, with the following directors being present and voting. And I actually did kind of want to read that out loud to make sure it flowed and captured everything that we talked about in the work study. And it pushed all my buttons. Oh, and I'm sorry, and we need a motion. Thank you, Director Moore. Because I think you want to make one.
I do. I move the board adopt Resolution 1164, Fall 2021 Teaching and Learning Modality Plan as presented.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any other conversation?
I was just going to say, I mean, I think the gist of it is that, given, you know, where we were last year and what we've gone through this year, that what we foresee is that the 21-22 school year is fully open to in-person learning. That's five days a week, to be clear. And other than by being barred by regulations that wouldn't allow us to do that. And then our next sentence had to do with some of the learnings we've had for some of the benefits of being able to have a remote day. For example, when we've had snow days and we haven't been able to have school, is there a way to have those days potentially be remote? But that would require statutory type changes that would allow the state to fund us. Because right now, we're only funded when they are, what was Jake's phrase? Directed, teacher-directed provision, right? And so, we are only allowed to do the remote now by special provision.
Right.
Okay.
I have a couple of quick ones. On your be it resolved, I think we're missing a verb. Should it be that by the Board of Directors of the Issaquah School District, that the 2021-2022 school year be fully opened to in-person learning?
I read it that the school year open. I thought open was the verb.
Okay.
The first sentence on be it resolved, where it says the school year fully open to in-person learning.
Okay, I guess that is a verb. And then it just did.
I think you're looking for like the school year commences, fully opened to in-person. Like, is there a verb in there?
Yeah, so she's saying, yeah, so she's saying open is the verb.
Yeah, no, I get you, but I hear, I hear the sentence both ways.
Yeah, no. But my second thing would be, do we need to make it clear that it will be open to in-person learning five days a week?
You know, I think that's implied by fully open, but I think to be, I think it would be better to say that explicitly, yes.
I mean, given the four-day-a-week schedules that we've talked about this year, I mean.
Fully open to in-person learning five days a week barring regulatory prohibition?
Yeah.
I like that. So do we need, we need to move to amend?
I move we amend the resolution by including the words five days a week after in-person learning in the resolution, in the resolved statement.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, I actually had another change that I wanted to make, but since we have a motion on the floor and it's been moved and seconded.
So we would do this amendment first and then any additional amendment?
Rolling. So unless there's further discussion on that amendment, I will call for the question. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, so.
That's amended, amendment has passed.
Okay. I was going to suggest on the second sentence where we talk about in response to emergency issues, that feels kind of vague and scary to me. And I would, I think I would like to say in response to weather or other emergency issues. Because we're mostly talking about weather. We expanded it to emergency, but I don't know, I think somehow that loses the clarity of we're mostly talking about weather.
Yeah.
Inclimental weather?
Incliment weather?
Yeah.
In response to inclement weather or other emergency issues?
Right.
Okay. Yes? Okay, I didn't, I didn't make a motion yet, so that's fine. Mess with it some more.
Diane is typing.
Diane, she's trying. Okay.
I guess my question first is, it says in addition, the board wants to pursue changes. I guess, should we be more clear on what kind of changes? Is it statutory changes? Is it regulatory changes, policy changes?
Multiple.
Yeah, it's probably all of those. Or could potentially.
Is it fine the way it is or do we need to be more?
I think regulatory.
Descriptive, I guess.
Regulatory changes would put it that it's beyond us. Or I would, or maybe state regulatory changes?
I don't think that that hurts it at all.
Who do we have to influence? Maybe.
State board.
State board.
State legislators.
OSPI.
Yeah.
That would make the rules around.
So why don't we do state?
Fair point.
State regulatory changes, yeah, state regulatory.
Yeah, I think that they're all state agencies. So in that regard, I mean, they're either state legislators or state agencies. So, yeah. It's a power that we don't possess at the local school district level.
Am I allowed to make a motion or do you want to make a motion? Nope, she's on the phone. All right.
Yeah.
I'm allowed to make a motion. Yeah. Okay, so I move that we make two changes to that second sentence. The first is we add the word, the words state regulatory between pursue and changes. And that we, we end the sentence with in response to inclement weather or other emergency issues.
Second.
Okay, so that's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
I think, oh, see, nobody probably can. I was going to say, can anybody read that last therefore?
Yes. In addition, the board wants to pursue state regulatory changes that would be necessary for the district to allow for remote school opportunities in response to inclement weather or other emergency issues. Okay. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so that motion passes. So now we have two amendments. Any further discussion on the resolution? So do we have to now change the motion to pass the resolution as amended?
No.
No, because we already amended it, so we're passing. Okay, good. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to pass the resolution. Any further discussion? No. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes, we have a resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, that was the easy one.
But important. You just sent an important message to our community. And that's, I thank you again for that because I want the community, I'm going to just be completely transparent here. I want the community to know that that is the desire of this school board, of the staff, the superintendent who works for you and the staff that work for me. In part because I want to send this message to our community. If you're thinking about what you should do in terms of enrollment in the fall, our intent barring us being banned by some other entity, such as the Department of Health, is to get back to regular schooling next year. And that's important because we had a meeting just over a week ago in which we had to talk about and some earlier discussions, and we're about to have them again, about the economic impact that this pandemic has had on our district. And a big part of that is declining enrollment. And I believe that that is in some measure driven by the fact that we have not been able to offer the full-time schooling that you just advocated for. So thank you for doing that. I hope our community heard you loud and clear.
Well, and to that, I have appreciated the communications that have been going out that are a summary of our board meeting.
Yes.
The e-newses that have been going out.
Yes.
So I'm sure this will be one of the items that is highlighted that the board has passed this resolution regarding our intent that the fall opening of school will be a full five-day-a-week in-person school.
Yes, it will. And I know that Executive Director Ingles is listening to this right now.
Sydney, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just, I guess I want to say that for me, this is an important input to the next conversation. Because again, as we look at the list of unknowns that we have that have caused us to have such a challenging time at the moment, this is one of the few that is in our direct control, which is what is the modality for school in the fall? And so for me, as we had that conversation last week and as we continue this one tonight about restoral, this is a critical step because it is what is within our purview to make definitive statement about. So for me, that's critical to the next conversation.
Okay, so, yes, so it is the intent of the board that barring the fact that the state prohibits us from doing so, full-time, it's in-person school, five days. Now, the more difficult, or not more difficult, but the discussion that we did not finish during our work study was on the board's parameters on program restoration. And I think where we left the conversation was Sydney was bringing up a really good point that we need to differentiate between the things, the COVID things that caused us to reduce fund balance and the enrollment hits that caused us to need to reduce the teacher population. And also, and both of those things impacted the fact that we had to reduce program. And there's different ways that budget money can come back to us. It can come back to us via our enrollment increasing, which is a point where we would start to presumably bring back staff because we would want to maintain class sizes at the existing level. And there is state money that could come to us via additional COVID relief money or additional hold harmless from enrollment drop money. And those could be used to restore program. They could also be used to supplement fund balance. And taking all of those, those different buckets and those different priorities into account and trying to make a resolution out of it. CFO Cooper has approached the microphone.
I don't, I don't think the mic's on.
You also need to allow administration enough flexibility to manage the finances appropriately. So I would implore you for flexibility in the resolution because there's a lot of water to go under the bridge yet. We could have enrollment decline further than I projected as well. So again, you know, these resolutions make me really nervous anytime that I have parameters from up on high on how to manage the finances, just because it limits flexibility and, you know, flexibility to CFOs. We're, it's what you have really to deal with the financial crisis. So I would implore you to be prudent. I know I don't have to do that. And remember, our fund balance is at the drop $16 million from this year to next.
So. And let me ask a technical question because normally, when we do the budget, we create a document that's a budget parameters and we approve it. That's not a resolution. Does that carry more or less weight than a resolution? How are they different?
A board action taken by the whole is still the same, still the same weight.
Okay, so it doesn't matter whether this is a resolution or whether this is just a list of parameters?
I've always been told by our legal counsel that a board action, it doesn't really matter if it's in a resolution or if it's just a motion and approved accordingly. Still has the same binding authority on the body.
Okay.
Which is why you've seen us do a mix of, so if you recall last week, there was no, there was no resolution. There was a resolution, there was a budget, or there was a resolution, but it was secondary action.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Marnie?
I think for me, part of making it a resolution is putting the story behind why these decisions were made, what factors we're looking at, and then what factors we will have as part of that decision-making process. So there might be a few therefor's in this one. You know, it might be therefore if this, then this, and if this, then this. I think as long as there's clarity in the document for what staff, what the board is thinking and what staff should pursue.
Well, but I do get the point of the flexibility they need. So I mean, maybe ours, could talk about our priorities, which could lead them to a bit of flexibility.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I always appreciate priorities versus more prescribed guidance, particularly with the budget, because again, we could, it could be, we could get state money. As the superintendent alluded to in our work study, it could be 5 million, it could be zero, it could be 20 million. Our swings are still rather dramatic. So it is unfortunate we do not have a state budget yet to have this conversation in full.
Well, to that point, should we wait until we have a state budget and have a special meeting? If that so be it, before we get to all the way out to our May 13th or whatever.
I was wondering the same thing.
Well, so what I will remind you of is the action you took last week is moving forward regardless of what you. Even if the legislature provides us with additional funding, those reduction of force notices pursuant to statute will be provided to staff that were below. provided to staff that were below the, uh, seniority line. So whatever, even restoration, even if you talk about counseling services, et cetera, those, those reduction enforcement is still going to be delivered pursuant to statute. What you're talking about is the restoration part of the program if we have additional proceeds. So, I mean, timing on that, um, it would be good probably to signal to your community what, um, you would like to restore. And so I'm fine with priorities. If you want to do it in two stages, I'm fine with that as well. Um, priorities tonight. Um, if you want to put some one numbers to it, we would, I would need a state budget to give you any guidance on, you know, how wide those.
Sydney.
How deep your investment could be.
Yeah, I, I think maybe, maybe for me, I'll back up to what, what matters to me. I can hundred percent respect the flexibility point. Um, what matters to me is, I guess first and foremost, as we started the conversation before, is that we, we put forward, whether it's this format or a different one, what I would consider a more complete or robust statement of the multiple factors that lead to having the current financial situation. It is, it is not a one-to-one from enrollment. Now, enrollment is a key component of the go-forward, but there are multiple factors that cause a drawdown in fund balance to get to here. So that's one piece. Um, of just a, a fuller articulation of the current, the current state. I'd say next, what's important is, um, clarity on timing of impact. Cause I think we've left that unclear. Um, I would say from a, a, a values perspective for me, timing is, timing of impact is, is critical. And, and, um, frankly, I think as, as difficult as these messages have been and are, and I am deeply empathetic as someone who has been riffed in the past, um, with how that feels. I also believe that the best thing anyone could have ever given to me was time. An understanding of the length of time of what was happening. So I think we have to be more clear about timing. Um, particularly for the community who I think has taken away that we return students to school and that we're cutting their mental health counselors the day we did, the day they return, which is not accurate as well. So I think again, for me, the next one is when, what is the kind of the timeline of impact notice? And when actions would be taken. I think next for me, what's important is being more clear about what are the different variables that lead toward um, a change in the, in the fund position of the district. Those are multiple, again, level of enrollment. Um, uh, legislative action, I think there's more than one that we believe that could lead to it and, and other. And then lastly, I think the last one, to your point about flexibility for me, is not so much about creating financial directive and more about stating what we believe is principally important from our perspective, which is having um, uh, a level of support in each of those categories commensurate with a number of students in the district and the teachers that, um, we support through some of those support services and the admin that wraps around that. So I feel like from me, and maybe this is, you know, those are the things I'm hoping to get out of this process and, and a, a statement of, you know, principally what we would do. A great example is, um, uh, in, in principles is, I know that our, I think, we've talked about this before, but our percentage of counselor to student ratio is incredibly low based on the state and the country.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yes.
Right?
Current, current, yes.
Current, currently, yes. So I would think principally our statement is that, you know, we will still remain um, above tho- those sort of averages seen in other places, which I think we still are even post-cut.
Yeah, we're not to the level that the, the national counseling organizations would recommend, but I'm not aware of any.
Which is a whole different circumstance. I think I remember at one of our conferences we went to, it's like one counselor to a million and a half students or something is the national average, right? So I think those are the pieces that are, I'm making up. Those are the pieces that I think we just have to be more clear about. It is our intent to continue to provide and above average is that state, is that national average of, of support for mental health and counseling services in our district even post these cuts. Right? We, we, we were throwing out a bunch of individual numbers last time, but I think that is what I care about principally. May, you know, documenting and maintaining here because that is, is a very definitive difference than they're cutting all the mental health services tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I say all that to say, those are the things that I'm trying to do, not necessarily. And then when funds become available, I probably am more interested in what is our vehicle for discussing and having input to how that restore, restoral happens versus giving direction on specific restoral? That's what I left the last conversation unclear about, which is do we have an opportunity once additional funds materialize to weigh in?
Well, that depends on how, how you adhere to your governance model.
That's correct.
I mean, honestly, that's the answer and I.
Which is why I asked the question last time, right? Because I.
Normally, you, normally, no.
Normally, no.
Right? I mean, in all, in all honesty, normally the budget parameters and you let us go to work. Um, but this is, this is a different cycle, so.
Right.
Um, normally, because I mean, things do happen rapidly too. And sometimes we just move forward with, because cabinet has been chewing on these reductions for months. Um, so we, we have been grounded in the work for quite a while, so. Um, but I am perfectly fine with, uh, prioritization or direction from the board on what to do with additional resources and then to report back to you when we have. Right, sorry.
Well, no, that's, that I, if you were done, CFO Cooper, uh, just a couple of thoughts that I, I think are important for me to in- inject at this time. First of all, I want to be clear, I, I actually am looking at a list of the cuts from last Wednesday. And I just think it's really important for my staff and my community here, there's no luxury items on here. These are all critical positions and we added them because they were critical when we got the funding, um, from McCleary, which is, and, and that's the other thing we need to remind people of. We have the robust staffing levels that we do now, which are the best that they've ever been in my tenure in the district, which spans two decades as a result of the McCleary funding. You know, the long history there. So we're coming down off of an all-time high in terms of our staffing. The other thing that I want to point out, um, and again, uh, these are all, these are, um, amazing programs and there's amazing people that fund, that, that, that run and make these programs a reality. Who, this is not about anybody not doing their job well or anything. I mean, I can point to things on this list. We added grad specialists and guess what? We've had, we've increased our grad rate almost every year since doing that. So kudos to those individuals who have helped us make that happen. I'm sure those additional counselors helped in that process as well. Um, so I just wanted to make that point. That's why this is so gut-wrenching and hard. As we think about prioritization, um, which is the, the hopeful side of this conversation, if we get more resources, I just want to point out, those priorities could vary depending on the situation at the time. So as has been pointed out by some in our community, you know, the governor's most recent, um, emergency proclamation to get kids back in was because of the mental health and social emotional impact of remote learning. And people said, how can you, now is not the time to make these cuts. That's a fair argument. Um, that, there may be a different situation at a time in the future where you, so you may prioritize things today and in this environment that you wouldn't prioritize, um, a year from now. So I just want to point that out. I guess what I'm trying to say is, I'm, I, I guess here's my concern. My employees that are out there and listening to this and following this, this is not about your individual value. We value you. You, we, you know, I, I, I can name people behind almost every single one of these programs and, and, and positions. People that I know and have worked with personally. But we are, we have the responsibility to manage this district from a fiscal standpoint and do the right thing. And so I, again, I just worry when we talk about, oh, well, we prioritize this over that. It's not that we're prioritized. It, it may be that's true in this moment of time that we live in, that that is a priority. It doesn't say anything about the individual who's maybe not the top priority. That's the only concern that I have and that's what makes this job so darn hard, especially, you know, managing up was a lot more fun. When I was coming to you and saying, we'd like to restore, uh, we are not restoring. We'd like to bring full-time counselors to every elementary school for the first time in, who knows, generations. That was, that was a joyful time. Having to unwind this, it hurts. Contemplating how it comes back feels good, but it's also complicated. And so much of this is complicated. And, and I appreciate your comments, Director Mullings, about helping people understand, um, the whole context behind this. I believe CFO Cooper's term last Wednesday was a perfect storm of economic calamity for us. Because you're right, it isn't just our low S R funds, it isn't just our declining enrollment. It just so happens we are, um, gobbling down next year more operating costs because we're opening two new schools. That's important for us to do that as a community. That's, that's a good thing and a happy thing. But it's a reality that it costs more to run, uh, sixteen elementary schools than it does fifteen. That's just a reality. So there's multiple things that are at play here. You're absolutely right. It's not as simple as just saying enrollments down, this is why we're doing it, or, or we're not getting it. And, and then of course, who knows, coming out of Olympia, just exactly what's going to happen. I think we will know sometime in the next twenty-four hours, or at least we'll have a better idea. But, so there's a lot of things at play here and it's very complex. And as complicated as it is, I will tell you, it's not nearly as complicated as the staffing, uh, spider web that we're working through right now with the, with the riff and where we'll be going. Cause it, that's a challenge too. And you heard Executive Director Fowler speak to some of that at the last meeting. Um, so it's all very complicated, um, but we're trying to be just as transparent as possible. That's why we put the, the numbers out there. We, and I appreciate the board's open openness and talking about this in a public setting and, um, but I just want our employees to know that we value them and we value these programs. And it hurts mightily to, uh, to, to even have to discuss taking them away. Feels better to discuss bringing them back, but there's a likelihood we're not going to be able to bring everything back.
Well, and I think too, that there's a misperception in the community, or at least some of the community, based on the emails we get and the things I see on social media. We are not cutting a program is, reducing a program is different than eliminating a program. Yes, we are reducing Swedish mental health counselors. We're reducing them, correct me if I'm wrong, at the elementary level. We are not changing high school and middle school. Those counselors are still there. We, this list, this one bugs me, and I know why you did it. But, um, I think it's confusing to the public because it was a little bit confusing to me. It says we're reducing five middle school counselors, but it doesn't include the fact that we have two additional counselors in another place in the reserve for middle school six, for Cougar Mountain Middle School. So it's a net reduction of three middle school counselors. We still have six times two, twelve in place. So yes, we are reducing people and I hate to see us do it. We're reducing a half a counselor at every elementary school, but we're adding another elementary school. So that presumably brings with it how many counselors does an elementary school have? A half. So again, we are, we are reducing programs. We are not eliminating them. We will still have counselors. We will still have Swedish mental health. The state does fund counseling to some extent, not enough. It does not fund mental health counselors. So that has always come out of either general fund or levy dollars. And for people saying, well, you said the levy would pay for that. The levy is still paying for that. It's just not paying for quite as many. Um, but I think people really need to wrap their heads around that. We're not eliminating counseling. We're not eliminating mental health. We are cutting back. And I don't want to cut back. I mean, that was the part of this that was the hardest for me. But, um, and that's why I think we wanted to have this priority conversation because, you know, there's a part of me that wants to say, yeah, that's the first place that you go back and, and you pull back. Accept that at heart. I'm an accountant and I'm really worried about the fund balance. So if we're going to have a conversation about, well, maybe we can go out of compliance on fund balance for a year in order to restore program, that makes me incredibly nervous. We could still have the conversation, but that makes me really, really nervous. Um, and I don't know, there, there's lots of ramifications to that, but I don't know what happens. Do our bonds get downgraded? I mean, if, if we go down to a certain fund balance, I mean, there's bad things that can happen to us, right?
Uh, yeah, I mean, the last time Bellevue took a dip in fund balance would be elect the district, um, they had a negative outlook and their debt was set to be downgraded. They then put a vigorous restoration plan in place. Um, and that was probably half a dozen years ago or more. Um, yeah, we could be downgraded. Our ratings could be downgraded. Could cost us fifteen or twenty basis points if we're going to sell bonds, but we don't have any bond authorization right now to sell.
It's just not a game I really would look forward to playing.
It does make me very, very nervous, the numbers that I showed you. Um, and, 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 and to Sydney's point, I could have been crisper on the, uh, the, um, what were we reducing? Because, um, as I gave you the simple chart, we had in the, I'll, I'll call it the mental, uh, I will call it the counseling cluster for lack of a better description. There's PBSES, which is in, it's, that's a social emotional support. We have Swedish mental health and the traditional academic counselors. So three different types, which also makes this conversation a little more nuanced than it probably needs to be, um, unless you just give us a broad, um, directive. So we had fifty-four, um, FTE before McCleary or right, pre-McLeary, um, allocated to that. At our peak, we had eighty-three staff, eighty-three FTE dedicated to those three prongs I just told you about. And I believe, sorry, I didn't get time to do the math, um, where we ended up, I was, uh, we are still above pre. We are hot, better than, um, we were before McCleary still. And to, uh, Director Weaver's point, the state funds forty-one counseling units for us. However, they don't fund the full cost of each employee, as you know. So we still have a richer formula than the state provides, which means we are relying on the local levies, which we promised we would do. Um, sorry.
And I, and I think that, that is key, that we, we, we made counseling mental health support such a priority that we were way above what the state was funding, right? That was our choice. We are really disappointed to be reducing that, but we're still well above what the state is funding us.
Fifty-nine.
Counseling services. Yes.
And again, by saying we're reducing the number of PBSES coaches, we still have social emotional learning curriculum in place. So, and we've trained a lot of teachers on the implementation of it. So even if some of the coaches go away, which again is not a great thing, but that doesn't mean the curriculum goes away. That doesn't mean the learning and the program goes away.
Correct.
So I just, I know it feels like I'm, I'm hammering on this, but based on what I'm seeing in email, people think we have slashed these programs to the bone and that's not.
We have nearly sixty FTE still supporting that work. So sixty full-time positions, fifty-nine is what's in the budget currently. So it went from fifty-four pre-McLeary. And then, um, and even that clear, pre-McLeary number, you'll, you'll note on the sheet, we still had eleven PBSES coaches then and ten Swedish contract mental health and thirty-three point two academic counseling. Then we went, we made the big jump. Superintendent has invested with all of you in basically those three prongs. We went to fifty-one and a half academic counselors, eighteen and a half PBSES coaches, we expanded up the system and moved, um, Swedish contract worker thirteen. And then what is left currently on the actions is thirty-seven academic counselors, uh, twelve PBSES and ten Swedish contract positions. So again, I know it's not, um, I was, um, you know, examining some of the public input and some of the emails and I, I should have been much crisper on the delivery about, yeah, here's our denom, here's our base. We are reducing it. We are not eliminating our academic or social and emotional counseling support.
And, and even the line item way down the list of, um, three theater managers. We didn't eliminate theater. We didn't eliminate the drama department. We eliminated these managerial positions. We still have drama.
Which, which are relatively new and we did not have until we completed the, um, uh, performing arts centers at District High and Liberty. And then given the, uh, complexity and the investment by the community in that equipment, we decided instead of doing, we used to do kind of ad hoc staffing for a theater. We, uh, provided a professional at each building some FTE to be able to staff that after hours.
Okay, and I've been talking, so I don't know which of your hands went up first.
Okay, so. So a lot of our talking is about the prioritization of our, um, counseling and social emotional supports as we look at these restorations. And if we were to use the, that verbiage in our resolution that we want to prioritize restoration of counseling and mental health supports for students, between this resolution and your budget parameters, you still have the flexibility to say that budget parameter says that the fund balance needs to be, that unrestricted and reserved needs to be between three and seven percent. It gives you the flexibility of saying, I, I've, I've got to meet that budget parameter and maintain the appropriate fund balance. And once I'm comfortable doing that, move back to that restoration of the social emotional support. So I, I don't feel like we would have to put that deeply into the resolution since you already have the budget parameters that's an equal footing directing you in the production of that budget.
Correct. I, I think, um, instead of a direction on prioritization is much easier to carry out with the being buttressed by the budget parameters on the other side than having a descriptive. If you get ten million, you shall.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm seeing it.
I don't think that was our intent.
No, as far as prioritizing what we want, because you know, other things on this list have to do with like PLC couches. And for example, you guys gave us the talking point that, you know, since we're not hiring new teachers and a lot of that was around supporting new teachers, there's a lot more rationale for why that wouldn't be the first thing we would be bringing back.
Likely, and again, they do an amazing job. It's been a tremendous service to the staff we've hired, but it was, it was born of a time when we were hiring a lot of new teachers every year and we do not anticipate that in the next year or two. So.
And another example is, um, uh, Executive Director Morris and I had a talk, conversation about academic counseling at the middle school level. And then the reduction before you, it took basically those large middle schools from three counselors down to two. So we do believe that two per smaller middle school. So going from fifteen at three apiece to, uh, six at two apiece or twelve is the right place to go. We probably would not restore any further at the middle school level as an example. But it doesn't mean we wouldn't look to elementary or PBSES. So there are some things that we believe are right sizes based on enrollment change, which is a different, that would have happened regardless of program reductions.
And, and you, as the board has observed too, um, a certain amount of flexibility for, we haven't always said everything has to be equal. We have driven additional support to a school that maybe we've, we felt needed. So maybe this, this school needs a third counselor and it may not entirely be driven by, by enrollment. It could also be driven by demographics and things like that. So we do need some flexibility to, to be able to accommodate individual school needs along the way as well.
Because acuity is not always measured in FTE formula.
Right.
Marnie. Now, I think, I think that last thing you said was very interesting and I'm trying to formulate for me, it's more what, what action can we take? And why are we taking it? So I think one of the things we wanted to do is again, communicate the board's value statement in some, some respect. What do we value if we see funding come back in? And so I think from what I've heard, I kind of wrote down what I would like to see. So that, um, I think, first of all, I think in the resolution, part of the story is an understa, a better understanding, as clear as you can make it. And I understand it's clear as mud, but an understanding of things, of expenses that we have incurred that are directly related to COVID mitigation. Whether it be PPE that we purchased, cleaning materials, all the thermometers and things that we've seen, the cost of the adestation that we're doing. You mentioned it during our work study, the cost of continuing to pay for benefits for employees that we had to furlough and the furloughing costs. Um, because those funds were not anywhere. And so we had to take them for our reserves. Cause part of the reason I'm interested in that is as we get dollars, what are those dollars? To Sydney's point, what were those dollars intended for? Are they one-time COVID kind of refunds per se? I think those should go back into our reserves. If they, if we pay that much, and I think it needs, I think the community really does need to see, this is what COVID has cost us.
And this is what we got from the government to offset it. And the numbers are not comparable.
Well, and, and it is a difficult conversation because some of it is revenue loss, which is different than increased expenditure, right?
Yeah, but both I think have to get captured.
Yeah.
I mean, how many thousands of laptops are we at at this point? And hotspots, which is an ongoing cost.
We're paying forty grand a month in hotspot costs.
I mean.
Well, there would be one example, forty thousand dollars a month just in our.
And so that's why I think it's super important that, that we outline that it's not just a direct line from drop, drop of enrollment, uh, for, for sure. Because there's all these categories of additional pieces that if, you know, we just wouldn't have spent.
Elementary teachers that we hired to support the hybrid model. We would not have hired those teachers.
Right.
If we had not been maintaining class sizes of eleven.
And so for example, one, one thing that I've always had difficult categorizing is the stuff at our transportation department. So we were able to get, so our, roughly our transportation revenue should have been, it should have been ten and a half million, but the governor beat out in early action, a million five, separate issue, went down to nine. Um, and then roughly, as we've talked about, there's three counts in a year and we get, it's a rolling funding. So if you miss a count, then you're, so let's talk about transportation as an example. We missed two of the counts, which means our funding would be down basically two-thirds of the nine million. But we kept staff on either a furlough or paid status and had them work as if they were, or paid as if they were actually working full-time. What cost does that fall under?
To me, to me, I'd put all of that in my COVID impact.
Uh, I, I call that a COVID cost as well.
The revenue and the additional, um, staff cost because otherwise we would not have taken that step.
Right. It wouldn't, we wouldn't have had that situation if it weren't for COVID.
No, and that's why I can, and, and that's the same thing where I, my, and your CFO gets a little, not muddled, but a little simplistic. That, and the enrollment decline is driven mostly by COVID.
Well, we believe that.
That one as a separate.
That's in a separate bucket, I think.
Even though it could be driven by COVID and we can, we can add those together, but it would be nice to see it separated by, by enrollment and then these other things we've been talking.
I can do that.
But we, if we want that to go into this resolution though.
Well, I can't.
We can't wing this.
I'm good, but I'm not that good. I can't do it on my iPhone.
I don't think we, I don't think we can answer tonight. Oh, because I just had a few more things I would really like to see in this because I, I guess I anticipated that we wouldn't be able to decide on a resolution, but at least this conversation will give you guidance when you see the.
This is actually very helpful.
But I think I would really like to see, you've mapped it out. So just include in there somewhere in the resolution, the pre-McLeary, post-McLeary, and then post-RIF expenditures for our counselors, so people can see what that is. Um, that was great information and I appreciate having that. Um, and you've given us information, but it just including the specifics on the current reserve impacts. And then I think it would be helpful to know the general amount of each staff member funded by local levies. I think you'd end up doing it like by a percentage and you just kind of aggregately, what's the percentage?
Yeah, on the aggregate, it'd be what sixteen, fifteen, sixteen percent.
Is it still?
I had to look at my money. Uh, it might not be that anymore.
It might be down more like twelve.
We were twenty cent, twenty-one, twenty-two cents in the dollar, but I think we're down to fourteen or fifteen.
Yeah.
I can do, it's fifty million, three fifty.
I think so, so that the community understands that, um, even though we are giving, um, given, uh, the, the location, I can't think of what it's called right off the top of my head. The additional funding from the state based on living cost, cost of living, what's it called?
IDP.
Oh, the, the, the IP.
Impressive price deflator.
Yeah, so, um, the eighteen percent or where is it?
Oh, regionalization.
Regional, I know, I might get R with an R, what is that word? The regionalization. Um, so even though we have the regionalization, we still, when you include benefits and everything, our teachers, there's still money from our local levies that in, that go towards our teachers. And I think people still don't understand that. And that partly is because we have positions that we pay for that the state doesn't. So that's how that comes out.
And we also have a portion of tri-pay still. And remember, um, the school employee benefit board is not fully funded by the legislature in any stretch of the imagination, as you all, as you know.
Which we made that.
Add that to the perfect storm.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so I think those things are important for us to, to have as things in here. So people really understand about, get a better understanding of the landscape. And then for me, if I were to prioritize, for me, if we get additional dollars related to enrollment increases, I think that goes towards classroom staffing and that makes sense that that's where that would be. Although it is an understanding of if we are not paying overload pay, would we need to go directly to classroom, classroom staffing? I don't know what that might look like. So it might be school building, funding and allowing buildings to have a little bit more leeway with how they staff that. So it may not be a certificated staff member, but something that's going to be supporting students in the classroom. Um, if we get one mind, one time COVID dollars are related specifically to refunding COVID-related costs. Like I mentioned before, I think those should go straight back into our reserves. And something that might need to be in somewhere in here is how many times and the amount of money that we have, how many times we, in the past, we have had to cover for costs because the state did not provide apportionment on time?
I could think of three.
And the reserves, if we, if we keep, where our reserves will be at, down to the three percent overall, what would happen? So the cash on hand, how many days of payroll would that pay?
Correct. We, we.
I think having that in here is really important to say, this is why we have a reserve. Is because I don't know what the financial climate of the state is going to continue to be. I've been really, you know, we've all been surprised by how funding here was pretty nominally affected. In fact, I think they have, are collecting more taxes than in the past, despite all this. But I think a concern is that a lot of companies got federal money that they won't, especially small businesses, that they won't have next year and they may be out of business. So I don't know what the financial climate will like, look like next year. Come next February or March and they get their dollars and they're like, oh my gosh, the money is not going to be there. And we've seen clawbacks in the middle of the year. There are things the legislature has done that I am concerned about our reserves being as low as they are. And so I think that dedicating any of that type of money directly would be great. And then if we just get the magic, the magic money from the state on top of that, that I think, you know, it's not going to be the fifteen hundred dollars, but whatever it ends up being, that any of those additional dollars then go towards the mental health counselors first. For me, it's the mental health counselors first, um, because the waiting lists, if you are trying to look for one, are just astounding. Um, I think they provide a wonderful benefit. And then for me, it would be the PBSES coaches, um, and then school counselors. So that's just, I wanted to get that out there and then that's probably.
And to your point, Director Morale, though, if, if we had a five percent fund balance to start the year, we'd end this year with about a million dollars in the bank. So when folks in my, my labor partners give me a hard time all the time at the bargaining table of having too much money in the fund balance, except for when we've had to double up payrolls because the state hadn't given us apportionment. And I, I obviously laughed at that with former IA President Doug Jones. Like, well, you're not complaining about the fund balance now, um, because we were able to cover payroll. And to my point is that you have sufficient reserves which weathered us through this year, even with mid-year layoffs. So if we, if we would have had five percent fund balance again on our three hundred and forty-six million dollar budget, we'd have a million bucks left if we draw down sixteen million. So, um, that's why you see large districts in Washington run ten, twelve percent fund balances, which is still low for nationwide. We have some of the lowest equity balances in the United States, just to how we're funded. And we have some of the strongest labor unions, which is, you know, not coincidence. So I mean, those, those two things cross, so.
And if we had not used the fund balance to say, pay health benefits for furloughed bus drivers, we could not have opened school last week because, well, we could have opened school and done what Seattle did, said, hey, good luck getting there.
Yeah, I, that, that's a, that's a great point, Director Weaver. And I, I, I do want, thank you for making it because I appreciate the leeway that you gave us early in this pandemic to make some of those decisions. Because I absolutely believe that's why you're seeing those yellow school buses all around our community. Not just Seattle, other districts are struggling to provide transportation services and in fact, aren't providing full transportation services. Um, so I would argue that was a good investment that we made.
And that's a huge equity issue, right? If you tell kids they have to get to school on their own.
It certainly can, that's right.
Absolutely.
Some can, some can't.
So I think I have homework. That's what I'm hearing.
I mean, I think what I'm hearing from the board, I'm going to try to summarize it, is we would like to put together a resolution, but almost as much for the community to explain the problem and to lay out all the, the wherethes with really a lot more clarity. I think actually you probably have enough sense of board priorities just from this conversation to move forward with the state budget. But I still think for us, the resolution is important, um, to, to write the story.
I agree. And Superintendent and I talked and we believe, uh, we had a belief that the board would want us to prioritize financial stability and mental health. I mean, not to say what proportion is, but this, right? I mean, that.
I'm just chuckling because the, the order that he just said that in, you're getting to go into our internal world here a little bit. Uh, Mr. Cooper and I have a lot of back and forth, um, over this same thing.
Really twenty years.
Yeah, and, and I don't disagree with his, his analysis of, of our fund balance. And, and you know, we, we can take a lot of pride in, we've been very fiscally well managed as a system for a long, long time. And, and I believe that is critical going forward because as I said last Wednesday night, I remain optimistic that this district is going to rebuild back to where it was and even beyond. And so as I said, I believe in two thousand and nine, the last time I had to do one of these things, I don't believe in completely dismantling things. So I appreciate, um, President Weaver, how you noted that we didn't dismantle counseling in the ISD. We reduced it. Um, we didn't walk away from our commitment to positive behavioral, social, emotional supports for our students, but we did have to reduce it. That's, that's what we're having to do in, in, in this, in this time. But I just chuckled because his tolerance and my tolerance for fund balance are very different. However, um, it, it's not that we are in disagreement. It's really more about where the tolerances are. And I just, I, I laugh because he, he listed fund balance first and then, yeah, mental health. And I probably would have done it in the other direction.
For my mental health, Superintendent.
Yeah.
You know, and, and to, you know, when Marnie listed out her priorities, I don't disagree with those either. Although I do have some concerns and, and I don't know yet. Um, but in terms of academic counselors and grad specialists, are we going to see, I mean, we always talk about quote, learning loss. Are we going to see kids as they come back in school? Are they going to need more academic counseling because of the impacts of remote learning? Maybe not, maybe it was great, maybe they will. And that's a piece that I don't know. So, um, those are pretty high up on my, um, priority list as well.
I mean, uh, truthfully, I hope that we're hiring late and we're hiring a lot. I mean, I would love to have enrollment come back roaring back because people are ready to come back, um, to brick and mortar school full-time. That would be ideal. And to that end, Director Weaver, I mean, hopefully we can add more supports in as, as, you know, when students come back, so do their supports. And, uh, you know, that, that is, that would be something that I would love to come back to you for. I, you know, in my career, I've hated budget extensions, which when you add budget on top of, so you've already approved. And the only reason we'd have to do that is either we have a huge influx of students and needed more spending capacity. And so I would love to come back to you with that request because that means we have a huge return in enrollment and our system is financially healthy again.
And then, oh, oh.
Um, so I agree, you know, by and large with the, the priorities we've all talked about, but I, but I also don't believe it can just be one thing. So like, it, it may need to be your restoration is a little bit of several things depending upon what any school building needs. Because not everything is necessarily going to be equal. It's not necessarily going to be that, well, we want to bring back something, but it has to be at every elementary school because that may not be what we can do. But yet we may have some elementary schools that have a very specific need that we need to fill, right? So we may need Swedish mental health counselors at some elementary schools, but not others. Because this is, this is the time to, to meet the needs of the students that are in the buildings versus we need to give everybody the same thing. And so, and to some of that, we, we need you to hear what we're saying and then make the very best decisions as you go forward and build your budget and/or add more to it.
as we find we either have enrollment come back or the state funds us with extra funds.
Additional revenue, yeah, in some other sports.
I, I think, and I'm not going to have the best words for what I'm about to say, so I apologize. I think the thing that I obviously has been a very difficult time and we've been unable to see all these different things that would materialize. And so I think that every party in this has been doing the very best they can to, to navigate it. I think if I was to look back on maybe what is my biggest regret or the thing that I, I feel I wish we'd done differently, although I don't know how that would have been, given all the uncertainty, is to try to paint a picture of just how dire the circumstance is. And I think that we, we tried to have that as a, a constant topic. We've tried to expose as much as we, we could. And it is, it is just terrible that we've had to come to this spot. I think we have gotten here just because of the circumstances of the pandemic, but I, I think maybe one of the things I'd love to talk about more is just how, how do we communicate the current state of affairs and where we're going in a way that allows people to have a a better sense of the journey? I know in this case, people have just been trying to survive it all. And so even though the words have been stated and we've had these conversations, it has been incredibly different to absorb the complexity. I know that, you know, we hear how these meetings are long and, and life sucking. But we do end up talking about topics that are incredibly critical to how this will all play out in the future. But I think I'd love, I think to Anne's point, that we have moved to this summary format of what we talk about that makes that a bit more consumable. I think that's a step in the, in the right direction. And the more we can, we can do and support and be diligent about bringing people along on this, the journey, the better. But I just, I personally feel like I, I feel like I've tried to, to communicate the direness of the circumstance and I just am incredibly, I guess sad and sorry that we, we didn't bring people along better to get to this point.
You know, if I could just comment a little bit about that, Director Mullings, and, and in a conversation that I had earlier this week with our IEA president and our UNISERV representative from WA, who is actually a longtime parent in the community as well. And at the, when McClery was finally resolved, for me personally, one of the joys was I got to quit talking about the deficit of Issaquah. Cause we spent 15 years having to educate governors and legislators in our own community that yes, we serve an affluent community, but we are not an affluent school district. And in fact, we were year after year near the very bottom on per pupil funding across the state. And, you know, McClery in many ways, and kudos to, to all the advocates who worked on that over the years and to the legislators who made that happen. It, it changed our narrative a bit and I welcomed that narrative change. Cause frankly, I didn't like, I, I'm just not the kind of person who wants to be a downer all the time. And so we had a few years where we didn't have to talk like that. In fact, we got to be pioneers. We brought in, let's be, let's, let's be clear. We brought in mental health counselors in a partnership with a hospital that was very, very unique and groundbreaking. And it, it just, it felt really good to me, you know, that we were able to have counselor ratios that we'd only dreamed of previously. And that I was no longer talking in this deficit model. So I've kind of gotten out of practice. But I hear what you're saying, Director Mullings. We are now back in that. And, and when I see that SIR spreadsheet of the 30 largest school districts and I see Issaquah back down at the bottom again, it's kind of, it, it feels a little defeating to me. It's like, wow, we worked so hard to get a fairer public school funding system in this state and I believe we did it. And I think there was a time, Jake, when the question, how much of our teachers and stuff were funded locally, it was like, the number was over 20%.
It used to be roughly 20, 25 cert and about 40% class.
Yeah. And so now we, you heard us say, we're all the way back down to like 14. So it, McClery actually accomplished a lot of what we wanted it to do. Unfortunately, we just got smacked by this pandemic. And so here we are again. So you're right. I think I do, I, I don't disagree. I guess it's time that I need to help our community. And I've already, I've been lobbying to try to get legislators to help understand that, that we are not in this advantageous position that people may think of when they just look at our, our beautiful community and, and frankly, with a, a lot of affluence. But, you know, as a system, that's not necessarily true of us. And, and, and it just, it's our reality. So I guess you're right. I guess now I need, and we, I guess we attempted to do that Wednesday night, but I, I, I don't think any one single meeting or one single communication, it's gonna, it's gonna take a constant telling of this story, which I appreciate this opportunity to do this here tonight, to tell the story of, these are all the things that have negatively impacted us here. That's why we're where we're at today. Not all districts are alike. Some districts will have to riff, some districts won't. Everybody's going to be in a unique circumstance, but we are back in a deficit mode right now and people need to understand that.
And the reality is, as your CFO, I, I don't want to alarm folks too soon either. Cause remember, a lot of times government, local government, state government, doesn't matter, they accused of crying wolf about their finances. And so, you know, you can only project so far ahead in, in, in my shoes. And, you know, honestly, I, I always want to make sure the educators have the funds they need and are managed well to be able to drive them into the classroom or, or the programs that you all create. But if you, so that's my Sydney. I think, I think honestly, it's a little bit of COVID distraction. And normally I would have been at the podium here much more often talking about the finances. But then when the math comes together, you don't want to alarm folks too soon. So it's always, it's always, for me, it's always kind of walking that line about, you know, telling, you know, making the superintendent even more nervous during a pandemic and, but when the, when, when the, when the signs pointed to a deficit position, one thing is we will definitely communicate that and we, we probably should have done it more often because the superintendent's point, you know, we had structural financial deficit issues for years in comparison to our neighbors. Those have been eviscerated for the most part. But now we're just having enrollment decline and COVID expenses during a pandemic and.
And the increase in operating costs and some declining revenues.
Yeah.
Again, the perfect storm.
Yes, I, I do want to bring this conversation sort of to a conclusion, but I did say at the beginning of the meeting that we would take public input on the whole reduction in force and restoration conversation. So I do want to ask at this point if there is public information, public input on this particular topic. And I see hands going up. So Nathan B.
Hey there. So unfortunately, Gallenger isn't, Director Gallenger isn't here because he has my representative, but my name's Nathan Bennett and I rent this apartment here in Sammamish. And I'll have kids entering the system and it'll be, but right now, this is about my friends who are teachers at Skyline. And some of them will be directly affected by this riff. Also to note, I saw that it was three minutes posted online. So, and I prepared for that. So I hope you afford me three minutes. So as I understand it, there's a long history of worse conditions, MOUs contracts at the secondary level. And I think it's very clear, exceedingly clear, when you look at the turnover rate at Skyline. So if this budget goes through, proposed last week, district-wide seniority, I understand 30% of Skyline active staff will be cut. That can't be proportional to the percent drop in student enrollment. It just further punishes the inequity established at secondary in the worst way. So what I, and I keep circling back to the source here on the, this bureaucracy on, on the, you know, the board, that kind of boiling down your, your staff to a student number value. And the, the lack of lived human experience as an educator in a body that governs education. And so I'll give you an example. Ron, last week it was dispiriting to learn that the one thing that kind of snaps you back to a sense of reality, that the pandemic is real and affecting real people is that your dry cleaning routine is displaced. The human connection here is long severed. And so I challenged the board today and the district to invest in your people, do it financially. You know, find the funds in the budget, push back on the CFO harder. I don't know the restrictions. This is the rainy day event of a lifetime. Can we take out a loan? Can we find a levy somewhere? Cause if you don't, it'll send a rift through education. That will not be, especially Skyline, it will not be recovered for a decade. So invest now. Do not under-report, over-cut, and then purport to be a miracle worker later when you find all this money in the budget saved up. That would be unconscionable and the reputation will follow. So miracle workers were alluded to last week on the staff, miracle workers who are expected to go out of their way to to kind of plug up the holes in the sinking ship. And so of course, these people will do what they can because they care for the kids, but this is an abuse of heartstrings. Okay? And these teachers, I tell you, they will not do this for you, just for you to save some more in your bank account. So I appeal to the board today. This is the time to be proactive. Do your due diligence, know especially the newer members. Because 17 years is a long time to be in the system. That's five years longer than a lifetime Issaquah student has to learn how to gain the education system. And need I remind you, this is a district that sat in grudge match bargaining for over a year, listening to demand after demand of teachers trying to find equity in a pandemic. So the, the time is now really. And so I just ask you, please follow up and, and shake it up as required of you. Thank you for your listening. I'll yield back anytime.
Thank you for your input. Kristen Flummer.
Hi there. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
So I've been a high school counselor in this district for 15 years. I also have two children in the district. Mr. Thiel and board members, I am absolutely appalled at what is happening to student supports in this district. I used to feel very valued and hopeful. I saw the district invest in mental health resources for students. You gave us additional school counselors to lower our caseloads that we could spend more time with our students. You made an amazing partnership with Swedish and gave us team mental health counselors in schools that gave access to therapy for students who could not access it otherwise. Make no mistake, these are life-saving resources. These are professionals trained to recognize and intervene when our students are having suicidal ideation. With the cuts made at the last board meeting, I am saddened to realize that my concern for students' mental health is not shared by this district. According to the American Counseling Association across the US, there's an average of one school counselor for every 455 students at a school. Currently before the cuts that you're talking about, I know I personally met almost 400 students per counselor. So no, we're not doing better than the nation. For those who are saying that we're not cutting counselors, that we're reducing them, it is the same thing. We are cutting middle school counselor positions. We are turning elementary school positions into part-time positions, which means some counselors will be working at two buildings and others will be completely let go. By cutting graduation specialists, PBSES coaches and other student supports, these job duties are being put back onto school counselor shoulders while in addition, you are adding to our caseloads. By doing this, school counselors will have less contact time with their students, which means you are decreasing every student's access to mental health supports. Time and time again, at the board meetings, the district has stated that they prioritize the mental health of our students and it has been wonderful to hear that. But as was said at the last meeting, your proposed cuts show where the true values are. The cuts to student supports is wrong, it's shameful and our students deserve better. I implore you to please ask questions of those that are in the positions before passing resolutions that you don't fully understand the full impact of. Please push back. Look at the budgets, look at the numbers, reach out. It sounds like you've already had quite a few families reach out to you at the impact that they are already thinking about to their student, school counselors being let go. Please know that school counselors are on the riff as well. So just because you are cutting positions, it's not just that. We are losing school counselors because of the riff. And if you riff someone who is, for instance, a high school counselor and someone who is in an elementary school counselor's position gets cut, but they're not riff, that elementary counselor could be moved into a high school counselor position. Every counselor in this district is amazing. I've worked here a long time and I have gotten to know at every level counselors and at the district. The student supports that you are cutting are absolutely heartbreaking. And it, if you are not losing sleep over this, the way that I and other counselors are, I'm, I'm saddened by that. Please take to heart what you're hearing from families that yes, these cuts are going to make a difference.
Thank you very much for your input. Kylie Massey.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Kylie Massey. I am the counseling TOSA whose position was so publicly announced at our last board meeting that has been cut. I am preparing to go back into an elementary school, two elementary schools, excuse me. Before I took this position, I proudly served as a school counselor at Clark and I was worked to the bone. I would move mountains for those students and any students in our district. The fact that counselors tonight have been referred to as academic counselors, not comprehensive school counselors, shows me that our district has no idea what the, the amazing work that these counselors do in our buildings, K-12. The fact that we're considering keeping the .5 elementary, but bringing back Swedish mental health counselors, that is a tier three, beyond tier three response. That does not serve our students' needs. I know you've heard a lot. I am heartbroken for what this means for our teachers, for our students and for our community members. Next fall, when I enter proudly two buildings and hold my head high to serve those babies, I would welcome any of you, when it is safe to do so, to walk alongside me for a day in the life of an elementary school counselor. And I will show you just how valuable we, and I mean all of us, K-12 are to the students in our district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kami Chris.
Hi, my name is Kami Chris. I teach at Sunset Elementary. I'm also a homeowner in the district boundaries and I was a student in Issaquah School District for my entire K through 12 years. I have personal experience with large budgets, not as large as this, but as a student government representative in college for three years and on a condo HOA board. So I understand that there are things that have drained ISD's fund balance and that some measures are necessary to reduce spending, to reduce, to reduce costs. I also understand and all of my colleagues and many community members that I've spoken to understand that the elementary counselors are not being cut, but rather that the hours are being reduced. And I am speaking right now because I believe that the reduction in elementary school counselors is going to be so impactful in a negative way for so many Issaquah students and families. I'm speaking to urge the board and district to prioritize reversing the reduction of elementary school counselors as soon as that $1,050,000, as noted in the document about reductions, comes through the door. In the time I have left, I'm going to try to list as many of the critical things that school counselors do that I can. This includes creating 504 plans, being the liaison for students experiencing homelessness, coordinating with the Issaquah Food Bank for weekend food packs for families in need, running small groups and individual counseling to help students facing difficult challenges, different situations, running the MTSS multi-tiered system of support meetings. The counselor is the go-to person for any child in crisis. And as was already mentioned, the current Issaquah ratios are, according to the ASCA, already above the national averages and heard the beep, so I will stop. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Kami. Mari Stevens. Mari.
Can you hear me? There we go. I don't know why my, there we go. Hello, thank you. I am a PBSES coach at Issaquah Middle School. And I have been part of this district. My kids are 15 and 17 and go to Skyline. So I've been a parent for a very long time and I was a substitute. And then I decided I wanted to go back and that's why I've been at the PBSES role for six years. And I'm the only coach that's been at the same building for six years. And I want to just point out, I appreciate the board's focus on mental health tonight and the social emotional learning. And I, you know, this district has really put that at the forefront, but when I've been this last six years and I've seen some big changes. I want to clarify that mental health was an issue before the pandemic. This is not a pandemic problem. It was before. We have always had extreme struggles in our schools. And our counselors at IMS are skilled at the suicide prevention, at the suicide counseling. I am always absolutely floored at the work they do with mediation with the kids. I mean, you think of everything that happened in middle school for us when we were that age and times that by 10 with social media and everything else. And these counselors are pivotal to creating a sense of calm and peace for. And these counselors are pivotal to creating a sense of calm and peace for these kids. And sometimes they're the difference between them hurting themselves and/or not, or their parents understanding how to help them or not. Also, I think PBSES as a program, we are the only district potentially in the nation that has on-the-site coaches. And the coaches, we do, we, we give PD to the staff, but we also spend time getting to know our staff. And what we do is model that relationships are where all of it begins. And my relationships with my staff are so important to me. And I am only a point five, and we, I have forever been trying to be more than that because I spent so much time at that school. And I have never chosen to go to another building because I don't think that I could have relationships. So I'll wrap up by saying PBSES, cutting down to point five and being expected to build those relationships in two buildings is incredibly hard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker will be Tori Burnston, Burnson, sorry.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Tori Burnson. I am a parent of an ISICUAS high schooler, an ISICUAS graduate, longtime ISICUAS resident, and the PBSES coach at Pine Lake Middle School. I also probably wanted to mimic the comments of those that went before me. I noticed that you mentioned that counselors were academic counselors, and I know in our building, and I'm sure in every building, counselors are overwhelmed by the amount of paperwork and are working far beyond their hours. And their interventions literally have saved lives. I know in our building that they have saved lives. And to those families, that's huge. But I know that in every building that that is what has happened, and that those counselors are putting themselves out there. And I realize budgets are difficult and challenging. I would just ask you to really consider that our counselors are not academic counselors. They are counselors that are making huge differences in the lives of families. And I also wanted to just point out, I thought it was interesting that both high school speakers mentioned SEL. And I think that just shows that the importance of SEL education and above that, relationships with teachers is the thing that has stood out to those students. I also want to point out that in the future, I am concerned that we need to really support teachers in their own mental health and their recovery from COVID and the exhaustion that this school year has brought on them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your input. So now we go back to the board. Where do we want to go from here? Yes. Okay, I just said, where does the board want to go from here? Are you cutting me off, Director Moore?
I think where we landed was on some additional homework from our our CFO.
And I guess, let me ask the CFO. Even though we do want to create this resolution, you, do you have enough to move forward? Do you want us to schedule a special meeting to finish the resolution?
No.
No.
Absolutely not. We have, again, the legislature is likely to have a budget out tomorrow, Friday, sign of dies on Sunday. It will take me a few days to figure out actually how the omnibus plays into our entire budgetary picture. Because, you know, depends on the legislation's written, that would fall on the normal cadence for your board meeting in May. Remember, the reduction of force notices will be delivered pursuant to statute on the action you took last meeting, so that will not change the course of action there. So any restoration, of course, would follow us, you know, completing more of the budget.
So Jake, just to clarify, so you think if, if, if the board, if we, we could consider this at the May thirteenth meeting, then?
Yes, absolutely.
That timing still works. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, that should work just fine. And what I was envisioning doing is taking the resolution, pulling out some of the key salient points from the length, rather lengthy budget blurb we went through last meeting, and then some of the new items that you had decided to move forward in our discussion, so.
I think, I think that's going to be useful information for the board to have going forward in any case. I mean, at some point down the road, when we're going to be talking about renewing the levy, I mean, we're going to need to have this information at our fingertips in order to speak intelligently to the community about what happened this past year. So.
Are there any members of the board, either a subcommittee or the board president, that I would, could bounce a draft off of in advance?
I would, I would be happy to do it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Sure.
Sydney?
I really like Sydney volunteering.
I will, as it's a singleton board member, I will gladly email you a draft, Director Mullins, and we can bounce things back and forth.
You could add a second board member if there was a desire to do that.
I was gonna say, I would, but if you want.
Anne's never met a math problem she didn't like.
Yeah, I was gonna say, both Anne and I think alike, so one of us is plenty.
And President Weaver, we may, we can give you a pass as you, as you've been busy answering emails and communications in your role as board president, so. If Director Moore and Director Mullins would want to work with me on a draft, or Superintendent and I, he'll see the first before I send it over to you. Any, is there, is that?
Yeah, appreciate that, Mr. Cooper.
Okay.
Director, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can I make one comment before we move on? I want to address, we don't normally address what people say for public input, you know, because it's input, not output. But I want to say, I apologize if there was, if, because I clearly, we have a communication of way of communicating that the public doesn't necessarily know. Everyone here knows that our counselors do more than just academic counseling. We know that they are the frontline. They are often the ones that have those relationships with students, often the ones recommending to the mental health counselors. It is kind of our way of easily communicating the difference between the mental health counselors from Swedish as opposed to the school counselors, and that's so hard to communicate. We know they do more, and so it's kind of our shorthand for that. It's not that we don't understand. In fact, this past summer, I think we had a whole, I can't remember it was, but Pam Ridenhour, who really oversees all of that work and all of the mental health supports for students, PBSES, all of that, has met with us. You know, I've helped with, I've helped moderate a public comment, a public meeting about mental health in our school district and understand that those counselors do more than just academic. It is our shorthand. It's not that we don't appreciate the hard work they do and understand that. So my apologies for us kind of using our shorthand, and the public may not understand.
Yeah, I appreciate your saying that because that, that was bothering me as well. And I know that we do, we do understand. Ron?
Yeah, I appreciate that too, Director Meraldo. And, and I guess one of the things I wanted to say, and you're right, we don't comment on public input, but I didn't really hear much that I would disagree with. You know, I, I, we talk about budgets and being values documents. We had some discussion about that at our last meeting. I think that this board and this administration have demonstrated how much we value this, given that we're the ones that brought all of this. And and we would love to be able to not have to do what we're contemplating here. But, you know, I've thought a lot about this in the last week, you know, because clearly this is the community we're hearing from, the counseling, the, the counseling community, because they're so impacted by this. But I asked myself, if I was going to start a school from scratch, where would I start? And this is a hard thing to say, because I love all of these people and what they do for our students. But it would be with the classroom teacher. And it would emanate out from the classroom. Absolutely, PBSES coaches and, and counselors and deans and administrators get in there and provide great, great support to our students and to our teachers. But I believe the best place for us to start is in the classroom with the teacher. So I worry about class sizes. So that's why it was important to me that we were, we were coming forward that with a proposal that was not going to dramatically increase, increase class sizes. I believe that as a state, we have placed value on class size. We passed initiatives. We currently live under a situation where we get additional funding if we keep our class sizes in K-three low, and I support that. So it's tough. I mean, you can disagree with us and say, yeah, we don't think you need to do this at all. Could take issue with our numbers or whatever. But at the end of the day, if I believe we have to do this, and I do believe we have to make reductions, given the current financial situation that we're in. I don't believe in decimating supports and programs. I want to keep the core of them there so that we can rebuild them, because I do believe there will be better times ahead. But if not this, where do we go? If you still have to go get twenty-two million dollars out of this system. And I know some would say, well, get rid of all the administrators or, 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 or get, you know, cut all of our pay and things like that. And, you know, those are all legitimate options, I'm sure. But at the end of the day, if I still got to go get twenty-two million or thirty million dollars out of this system, and I don't take it here, then I got to go get it somewhere else. And it's when you contemplate that somewhere else that it gets really, really challenging. It's when you would trade out hearing from counselors to hearing from teachers or whatever, wherever else we did this. So I, I, you know, as I've stated before publicly, I have been a victim of a reduction in force as a classroom teacher. I know, I know exactly what it feels like. And I was younger then too, and it was scary. But I also hope that my young teachers who are anticipating a riff notice understand that it's not the end of the world. It felt like it to me at the time. But, you know, you can actually suffer from a riff early in your career. You can, you can be reduced, if you will. And you can come out of that okay, and you can have a long, successful career after that. And, and I believe that they will, and I'm sorry that, that we're in this time and that we have to do this. I'd love to hang on to every one of these employees if I could. But these are tough, tough decisions that have to be made. And frankly, that's what you hired me to do. And so in a way, I want to say to people, you know, you, you, you don't want to make this cut, but I'm not going to ask you to tell me what cut you would make. Because that's not fair for me to do to the public or to my employees. That's my job. And I work with my CFO and my team and my bosses to make these determinations, and it's not fun. But it is the reality that we're in right now, and I believe that it's the important thing to do to keep us strong for the future. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, and I apologize, people are probably seeing me play with my phone. Dr. Gallinger has joined us on the Zoom call, and he would like to speak. So Dr. Gallinger, are you out there?
Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I appreciate what our superintendent just said for his explanation. I think for me and from my perspective, if I'm thinking about workforce reduction, it's if and when we get to return back to the staffing that we have enjoyed this point, who are the easier positions to fill in the same way that you've thought about special education? And et cetera, et cetera. So we have to fill a third grade position versus a counselor, and this is where I don't know the answer to it. Which one is going to be the easier one to fill a year or two years down the road? And that's, I don't want to lose the expertise within our district that our students certainly need in this pandemic recovery period that has been concerned. The second thing that I wanted to make, and I missed your guys' conversations, but maybe even stated. But so much of this intervention work was out of, funded out of levy dollars. Dollars that we went into the community to specifically say, here's what we believe we need, here's how we're going to spend them. And so for us to make these wholesale changes, it's, it'd be like, from my mind, changing how we've gone out and say, hey, for the bond, we're going to build this building and then actually not go be that building. And I think that hasn't been a consideration, at least that I had heard us discuss at all.
Yeah, we did talk about that somewhat to the extent that, for example, the Swedish mental health counselors are funded by the levy. We cut three of them, but there are still all the, the middle school and high school Swedish counselors are still there, and they are funded by the levy. But I agree with you to some extent. It's, it's a difficult, it's a difficult explanation.
I do think for me, that's one of the reasons the mental health counselors are at the top of my priority when he talks about which positions are difficult to refill. It's because if you look at the backlog of waiting lists to get in to see a mental health counselor right now, you're talking six months. And so I think if we lose that position and they move on, they're going to some outside practice. It's going to be harder to find somebody who will be willing to take on that contract. So I think, and you can correct me, Superintendent Thiele, if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I think we've had in some cases some time to find those people to fill that position.
Yeah, we've had some staffing issues. You know, we've lost mental health counselors along the way, just normal things that happen. We, we do all employees. But, but that is my understanding as well. We have struggled at times, or our partner Swedish has, has struggled to fill open mental health counselor positions as well.
Okay, so are we good on this one? And we will, we'll revisit this at the next meeting. Okay, we are now about a half an hour, thirty-five minutes behind our agenda, and I don't want to bump capital projects too far out into the ozone. Do you want to try to quickly monitor EL twelve, or do you want to bump it to the next meeting? Pleasure of the board?
I would go to the cap, cap projects.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and yeah, well, okay.
I would, I would agree.
Okay. I don't want to skip over the EL two and EL twelve because those, I think we can dispose of quickly. Those are the policy changes that we proposed. We had a first read and a second read, and we decided not to vote on the second read because we still made some significant changes. I think it's my understanding, because I haven't gotten any feedback from any of you, that we're good with them as they currently read. So I think we could make a motion and approve them. Just my thoughts.
You want a motion?
I'd love a motion.
Okay. I move the board, accept the policy revisions for EL two treatment of people and EL twelve learning environment as presented.
Second.
Okay, so we have EL two, we actually didn't change very much after the first revision. EL twelve, we did make some changes at the last meeting, but I have gotten no further pushback from anyone that they felt additional changes to need to be made. I don't, do we need to read these, Diane, or they're attached, right? So, okay. Do I have any comments, questions, thoughts from the board?
For me, I felt like in the last revision, we got to the changes that I was looking for.
Okay, I, I would agree. Okay, seeing no other hands, I will call for the question. All in favor of approving the policies, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Harlan, are you voting?
Might, is he muted?
I can't tell.
Yeah, aye.
Okay. I just wanted to give you the opportunity since you're there. Okay, so motion passes. Thank you very much. And just to be clear, the EL twelve that we just bumped to the next meeting, because we do our monitoring in arrears, will be the monitoring of the policy as it previously existed for the previous school year. Moving from this point forward, we'll monitor the new policy. So, yeah, okay, we're good. And that brings us, that we're right on time, to capital projects.
Well, Mr. Mullins is making his way down the elevator.
I think you surprised him, actually. He had that nine oh five time and thought, oh, there's no way that's gonna happen.
He's like, I'm coming down.
Yeah.
Okay, no, that's, that's fine.
So we can likely be, is Mr. Mullins gonna fire up the website is what I don't know.
I wouldn't, I, I, Stephen did.
Did he load anything?
Did he load anything for you?
Ah ha.
There we go.
Oh, that's right. So we might as well begin. And Tom will provide some more technical. And Tom will provide some more technical.
Sure, sure.
But of course, I might as well start. So Elementary 16, set to open on time.
Yeah, Jake, what's the name of Elementary 16?
You need to fix that.
But we know what the name is. I'm test, this is actually a public test of my CFO.
There's some Cedar Trails.
Cedar Trails, yes.
Yes. I did get that same request on, on a lot of my documents as we plan still have the number on it. I'm like, okay, just relax, everybody. I've had some other fish deprived, so I changed the name of the school. So, yeah, Cedar Trails Elementary School is, as you can see, that is the frog skin on there, correct?
Yes.
Go for it.
That's the frog skin, the exterior, it covers the insulation of the building, creates a, a vapor barrier and a water barrier. And block is going up, as you can see around. And what will cover the rest of that is sheet metal. Okay, yeah, I can see, perfect. Interior finishes are going along well.
Wow.
Cabinetry's going in. This is the stage down here. This is one of those projects, they work in whatever portion of the building they can is the most, the furthest along in order to meet the schedule. And they're doing well. Middle School Six, this is a view from down on Talis.
Hey, Middle School Six has a name too.
I'm sorry? Cougar Mountain Middle School.
Cougar Mountain Middle School.
The only fun thing the board has done all year, we're really excited about these names.
Well, I know the school community is appreciating.
Yes, and I will. It's been so, it's been three or four years for me, so it's been a tough change, but I will get that done. Structural steel's done, placement, still working, that's another building, they're working wherever they can. And finishes going up in this building also. The site is, we struggled at the site. We had some soil displacement on a portion of the site. We had to stop work. We sent out a notification to the neighbors. We're working with the city right now to get back and get started, and we're hoping the end of next week, we'll get started on the, doing more work on the site again. But the building is moving along nicely. We're continuing to deal with, with the site and some later permit issuances, so we're struggling with the schedule there a little bit. So.
Yeah, this, I mean, I think people, if anybody in the community has driven by know that this is a challenging site. It's at the bottom of a very steep hill. Folks who live in the Talis community know all very well. And so it does present some unique challenges on top of the unique challenge of trying to build a school during a pandemic. And, you know, for me, I, I'm so thrilled to see this school coming together, and I think what a journey we've been on, going all the way back to the sale of the Maywood, our May Valley property. And, you know, the tremendous cost that the district has incurred to acquire this site, which is not an 80 acre site, but I believe more in the lines of nine acres. And so, which is very small for a large comprehensive middle school like this. So there have been challenges here. Okay, I, so I guess what I'm doing here is I'm kind of trying to soften the soil a little bit because
Thank you, Superintendent.
we have a little bit of disappointing news, but we also have some, some more encouraging news as we try to manage through to the completion of this project.
So update the board and provide a general update to the public about Middle School Six, AKA Cougar Mountain Middle School. You know, we've always been tight on schedule. We just had confirmation from our general contractor that Middle School Six will be late and not be open on time for the start of school. So.
So to be clear, as what Mr. Cooper just said, we will not have occupancy of this school by the August 31st date for the opening of the 21-22 school year.
Correct.
That's the bad news.
Substantial completion date provided by our contractor is about October 12th, so there's a six-week delay. Now, the, as you can, as Director Mullins talked about, poor soil conditions, you've seen the excavation, huge amount of rain, a little bit of a late start on the permitting side, and then, of course, our supply chains during the pandemic were not helped out. And we had, quite frankly, we had labor issues at the start of the pandemic. Given some of the trades, we're able to be able to collect some unemployment and not actually report to work for quite a while. We had, we, they had trouble getting tradespeople to work.
And they're still having trouble.
But we'll say this, you've tasked us to have solutions to problems. So we reached out to our colleagues in Bellevue, Bellevue School District, because legitimately, we need a place to house between 600 and 700 middle school students for six to eight weeks duration.
So when we, we, you know, you could contemplate a lot of ways, what do you do when you can't get a school open in time? And, and the number of you on the board have done a lot of construction projects with this. Traditionally, when you miss a deadline in school construction, the easiest thing to do is punt an entire year. And we've actually had to do that on projects in this district at times because of just circumstances that occur. That, that obviously is not very appealing, because we have some very crowded middle schools, even with our declining enrollment of this past year. Another option is a mid-year move, but the problem with that is you, in this particular case, you have students in multiple schools that would be impacted by this. So, well, it's true, the bulk of these students are, are coming out of Maywood Middle School and Issaquah Middle School, but you, you have other impacts in the system. And to try to wrap your head around, well, how do I keep all the kids in their current school? And then get them to the new school and then the staff, it, very complex. So we, we started, that, that just didn't feel very good to us at all. So we started to look for, rather aggressively look for another option. Unfortunately, we found one. So now, Mr. Cooper.
Yeah, so my colleague, Melissa Vida, Deputy Superintendent of Finance and Operations for Bellevue School District, they have a, what they call a swing school they use for construction, that's Ringdall. Is it junior high?
Yeah, was it junior high?
Junior High School. They use that often when they have swing construction. We have, we do not have the luxury of having an additional building to be able to house students in during construction periods. We often have portable classroom villages.
So they've occupied, a number of Bellevue public schools have occupied this school while their school was being rebuilt. If you think about like when we rebuilt Pine Lake Middle School, rather than trying to do the two on the site, they've, they've had the ability to just completely relocate the students in the entire school so that they could just clear the site and, and do their work. It, it would be a wonderful thing to have an extra school that we could do that with. That's not been in our, ever the reality that we've had. But it, it is a reality that our neighbors have.
So we have been working with our neighbors and we're very close to finalizing a, for lack of a better description, a rental agreement for a, a two-month period to be able to house our students. This, this middle school is located in the Newport Hills area. So geographically speaking, if you are a Newcastle kid that was going to go to Cougar Mountain Middle School or a Maywood student, we will be able to effectively bus you to Ringdall. And the commute, actually, we timed the other day, is 14 minutes from the central office here. So in some cases, closer than some of our other South End schools and distance. So the school is proximate. It is a solution to a very short-term problem. And of course, right now, my team is going through Ringdall and determining what type of infrastructure do we need to add? How, how are our, how's our IT infrastructure going to look? What is, what, what a student desk and chair is going to be like? How many classrooms need outfit? How much material do we move to Ringdall for the first trimester, as an example, because we don't want to move everything over there? So the bad news is five-story middle school on a steep downhill slope during a pandemic, we are six to eight weeks late on, which I profusely apologize for. And we haven't had a late school like this. However, as Superintendent noted, we would like the rest of the boundary changes to go into effect immediately. So this model would allow that to happen. So we would be able to right-size Pine Lake, Beaver Lake, PCMS, those would go into effect, and then the same with the Maywood and IMS boundary changes to fill Cougar Mountain.
And the communication is going to go out to the affected families?
Yes.
When?
I believe tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah. The core team was learning of this. I think that communication is all queued up and ready to go. Obviously, we notify the board. Principal McKee knows, of course, she was going to be able to talk to some of the staff, the core staff, and then I, the, the parent community, the school, the, the Cougar Mountain Middle School community will, will learn of this tomorrow. And so, you know, the good news is, it's not only that our neighbor had this school that they're willing to lease, and I can't thank them enough for this. It actually, as Mr. Cooper just said, it's in a pretty good location for us too. It's not that far outside of our, our district boundary. And so it will work, we'll be able to bus our students. We recognize it, it, it will be less than, this is, just to be clear, this is going to be like our other middle schools, a spectacular facility for our, our community to teach and learn in. There's no doubt about it. Ringdall is not going to be of the quality of that, but we're going to do everything to make it safe and COVID-appropriate, depending on what those mitigations are, are needed at the time. And it will work, and it has worked for Bellevue students many times over the years. And I, so I'm just very, I'm very happy that we have this option. We, right now, we would anticipate likely being able to move our students in, in that late October, early November timeframe. I'm guesstimating they're going to lose between 40 and 45 days of being able to be in this building. And like I told Principal McKee today, if you've ever had a kitchen remodel or anything that, that was delayed, and it's just incredibly frustrating, and you're like, where's my contractor? Why isn't this getting done? It drives you crazy. Then it gets done. And pretty quickly, those terrible memories go away and you get to enjoy and live in the new space. And I told Principal McKee, we will look forward to christening this new school, if you will, sometime shortly after we get our students in there. The other thing I think that will be nice is that it will give our contractor time to complete with us, us not pushing to get in there and do things, because as Director Mullins has made clear to me, soon as we start getting onto a campus, the construction rate slows way down. So we'll be able to give them the space that they need to finish. And I think that when, when those students and staff move into this beautiful new building, it will feel really done and ready for them. So I'm encouraged by that. And there's always work to do after you get into a, a school. But so, yes, it's disappointing, and I'm very sorry for that. Particularly sorry to the Cougar Mountain Middle School community. But I, I'm thrilled that we have this, this solution to address the problem in the interim. It will be a few months, and hopefully it'll just be a distant memory by, by this time next year.
Yeah, so a big thank you to Bellevue School District.
Absolutely.
So does the cost to rent the Bellevue school, does that come out of the capital budget?
It would. We have not discussed cost yet, and my partner did say it would be a very favorable lease term.
Well, that's very nice of them.
And I would like to point out that we did this for Lake Washington School District years ago, Superintendent tells me, when we opened Pine Lake and they rented it.
With, yeah, I was told back when, by a, a, a community member who was in the inaugural class at Pine Lake Middle School when it was first built, I believe in like 1974, that the district was not able to open it once it was completed.
I remember that.
And Lake Washington was remodeling a middle school, so we leased it to them. And it, the first year of operation of Pine Lake Middle School, it actually served as a Lake Washington School District school. So things like this happen. And, you know, again, we're just very, very fortunate. And, and I love the collaboration and partnership that I have with my colleagues in the surrounding school districts, much like the partnership that Director Maraldo and Director Gallinger have formed with our neighboring school boards. I think, you know, and, and I will always go out of my way to try to support and help my colleagues in neighboring school districts if I can as well, such as opening up vaccine centers to their employees when needed. So, you know, we, we're all in this together. I mean, we all have our own districts and our own boards and our own missions, but overall, we all believe in and support public education. So I'm very grateful.
We will keep you updated as that progresses, but we did feel like it was time, now that we had confirmation from the, from the general contractor who, Cornerstone, who's building Middle School Six, AKA, sorry, Cougar Mountain Middle School, as you know, they deliver and have delivered for us on construction project, other construction projects. So when they tell me they can't finish it on time, I do believe them because, as you recall, they built Gibson Nick over a summer. They built the Sequoia High School in 18 months. So it's not for lack of ability, it is just strictly the site, the additional earthwork and the COVID supply chains that kind of hammered some of our construction timeline. So, again, apologies for the delay. We do have a solution. It will be short-term. We will communicate with families. And now, since I continue to deliver bad news, I'll let Tom have a presentation.
Okay, next slide. This is the, from up on Falcon, looking down, the structure on your left is the parking garage. It's the main entrance and entry drive. This is a picture of the parking garage that's to the left, the lumber you see here. Balcony from the parent drive, this is the school, face the school commons and gyms that will face out towards the sports fields. And this is just a picture of some interior finishes happening. And that's a picture from just above sports field, looking up towards Falcon Way and Timber Ridge, and just kind of a picture that kind of shows what we're dealing with.
Some of the challenges when you build at the base of a very, very steep slope.
Yes. High school number four, Elementary 17, moving along. We've got our first round of land review comments back from the city of Issaquah. And they're quite complex, as you can imagine. The team is working through them, distributing to the proper people, trying to get the answers and get it turned around and back into them as soon as possible. If anybody's interested, we're having a community meeting for critical areas next Wednesday night. And any positive input would be appreciated. The city has told us that they won't limit it to just critical areas, so I have an idea that it might be a open, a little open forum for the community to comment.
I, I, because I was going to ask about that. So, because it was listed as critical areas, so, so the intent is really to talk about, like, the wetland? Is that, is that what they mean by critical areas?
Yep, you're, yeah.
The wetland-type areas, I see.
That's the intent of the meeting. We've been told that they won't limit comment. So it's, it'll be, it'll be an interesting meeting to see how it's.
So this is a city-directed meeting?
Yep, it's a fairly new requirement under the city code that any project that has critical areas, you, you need to have what they call a neighborhood meeting. And it's an opportunity for the community to ask questions and comment on critical areas, wetlands, whatever those areas might be, to get questions answered and give comment.
I see. Will there be any other kind of community meetings? Like, for example, I attended one that was for what is now Cougar Mountain Middle School when we were over at IVE, and it was a community meeting. And, but that wasn't necessarily just about critical areas. So is there still to be something else that's a community meeting, or?
I think we're done with community meetings as far as open community meetings like we've had.
Because there was one earlier, and I didn't know if that was then the only one of that.
And this one will be, is supposed to be just on critical areas and, and so we've got our team queued up, ready to go and ready to answer questions. It'll be in a Zoom, it'll be in a remote format. So.
So the format is the city runs it, people ask questions, and, and then the district and/or construction team, whoever, architects, all try to respond as much as possible in the moment.
Yep, respond as much as possible in the moment. Exactly. Maple Hills is, we've got a contractor on board, construction started moving along nicely. And near to the end of the summer, started school year, we'll have the new HVAC system, not fully up and running, but close. Again, COVID supply chains for HVAC equipment, that type of thing is, has slowed from a eight to 12 week to a 16 to 24 week timeframe. So we've got the products ordered, things are moving. We're doing everything we can to keep them as comfortable down there as possible. Their systems now that they have are running still. So once the summer hits, those will get pulled and as much work will get done and ready for those units to be delivered and everything to be back up and running. And that project is, December is a completion date. Beaver Lake, we're into the city. We've got the review comments. We're back out. Beaver Lake, we're into the city, we've got the review comments, we're back out to bid there. And bids are due in May. We hope to start construction right around the end of school, and that'll be the same type of thing. We're getting the units ordered, and they will be in sometime in the fall. But these existing systems will stay up and running until then.
Hey, Tom, I have one request related to Beaver Lake. First of all, it looks beautiful. I mean, even though those, those are dangerously close to Cougar colors for a Husky, but it looks beautiful and, and everything. Could we get a new picture of that for our, our wall out here outside the boardroom? Because the current one has all that mauve and kind of beigeish colors on it, and I just think this looks great. And it was a reminder to me, whenever we do change the exterior look of a school, we need to update the photo of it out on the wall as well.
We'll do Maple Hills at the same time.
Thank you.
Keep going, yep. Liberty High School is, is moving along ever so slowly. We have a contractor down there that has struggled and with all the things that a larger project has struggled with, supply and, and manpower and everything, but we are getting there. And we're looking now at a May completion date for, to get that concessions and restroom buildings completed, open and using, useful.
It looks wonderful. I know there's been real problems, and that's true of just about every construction problem, but it does really look nice down there.
Yep.
I'm excited for the Liberty community.
Yep, it's coming along good. Isiqua High Stadium, we're out to bid, and we're looking at a, right around a June first start date. And that's going to be nice. New press box, clean up some of the stands, paint, new visitor bleachers, and new ADA access for both. And it's going to be another nice project to finish that stadium off. New one hall, on the update, Holly Street Campus Early Learning Center. And we don't really have any good pictures, so I just kind of put up a colored floor plan of the new areas. The blue are some existing classrooms we have now that the pre-K is in. The green classrooms are new E-CAP in ECE classrooms, they're going to be added. The orange up on the top right is going to be a new health room. This will house E-CAP, ECE, child find program, new health room for the campus, amongst some other amenities, new staff lounge and some things like that. Holly Street Campus Creek Bank repairs. This is what happened spring of nineteen. A road to the bank, we've been working with the five different agencies that you have to work with when you deal with salmon bearing stream. As I say, a half mile downstream from a fish hatchery, it's not an easy push. You go to the next slide. This is the temporary repairs we've done to try to protect our parking lot. And now we're working on the permanent design, which will push that bank back out and put a fish-friendly barrier in front of it. Which is, if you go back there real quick, those logs that are floating out there right now, if you look close, they're chained to the bottom of the creek. That was once the face of the creek, of our bank, that was the fish-friendly facing for a previous fix the city had done. So. And there's our schedule. And I've added the new projects on the bottom, so.
Tom, wasn't, not to correct you publicly, but wasn't it the flood of February twenty that took that part of the creek out?
Twenty, you're right, you're off. Exactly. Yes, flood of twenty. Any questions?
For the delay in the opening of Cougar Mountain Middle School, what's the financial impact to us? Like, is there more cost or has because of that supply chain issue? So, and then part B of that question is, seems like there's so much federal recovery dollars. Have we looked at, is there any sort of grant money we can apply for to help deal with the fact that this is a pandemic-related issue?
That I have not looked into pandemic-related relief, that would be a question for Jake. As far as additional costs, we will have some cost incurred to, to move into Ringdol, to get that up and running, hopefully not substantial costs. And due to the unsuitable soils on the site, there have been some, some problems, there have been some cost overruns there. So, are there any possibility of recovering funds for COVID-related delays at Cougar Mountain? The opening of Cougar Mountain, see any way of, from our contractor?
Yeah, like federal recovery dollars because of the, the impact of COVID and on our construction and opening of a new school.
Um, we could, Director Gollinger, we could definitely explore that. I have nothing on tap at the moment.
And then my second question is not related to any of these projects, but it's related to Pine Lake. And so I know Pine Lake is a recently completed project.
Yep.
But I understand that the softball field was unusable this spring because of the poor drainage. So for a campus that has only been open for two years, can, like, is there any sort of warranty issue? It seems like that's a pretty big deal to be two years old and have an unusable field.
It's not, the situation is anytime you do a baseball field, you have to do, you have to walk the fine line between your ability of your field to drain and the amount of clay in the soil. The clay is what gives the sand on a baseball field its firmness, so you can run. The contractor missed with that combination, and part of it was a, a design issue, too. Unfortunately, the field was closed from the very beginning to let the grass root. You have to have two seasons, growing seasons. So that field sat without us knowing that it was unusable, the sand portion, until we went to use it. We're in the throes right now of working with the contractor to get the right combination of clay out there to get it mixed in and get it firmed up. And it's just, it's, with all that's going on, it's taking a little longer than we'd hoped. Yes, it's cornerstone.
Was there any additional cost to the district for that?
The most, it would be a little bit for the, for the clay soil, but we're, again, working on that with them. I don't think it will, because it's not all the contractor's issue. It's partially a design issue, too, so.
Isn't a design build by the contractor, so it would still be a contractor issue?
Pine Lake's not a design build. Pine Lake was just your basic GCCM, so it's, it's, we have to go back to that landscape architect, and we're working with them, and they're giving us the support, too. We're just trying to find the resource for the clay, the clay to put in. For example, we need thirty-three, if we went with straight clay that's refined, you need, it's about twenty-five thousand dollars worth of clay that needs to be put in. We're trying to look at a source for a less refined clay that will work just as good, but they're struggling to, with the wet weather, it's finally drying out, that they can get that out of their quarry and to us. So we are working on that.
The reason why I bring this up is, is, seems like we are asked to usually give our final blessing on a project before, and you just said it takes two years for a field to mature. So this seems like there should be some sort of carve-out for fields if we're going to substantially see us, build a, a campus that's substantially complete and we're signed off on it, if that's not really true.
And we're not signed off. That project isn't one hundred percent signed off yet, and we're still working with them on that. And that is the, the landscaping was what was holding up that final sign-off, and it was the field and trying to make sure we got it established. We actually had to go an additional growing season in order to get that. We rejected it the first time. Unfortunately, nobody went out and played on the softball field and saw that when you dug your foot in, it was more like a beach. It wasn't, it wasn't firm enough to play on, so. But we're working on that issue now, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay. And Director Gallinger, you're just in the nick of time for legislation.
I, I missed it. Are we not going to go back and do that EL? We're skipping it completely tonight, is that, is that the?
You're, I think we were skipping it and bumping it to next week unless you really want to do it now.
I think it depends if staff's ready. It just seems like it's one that should be relatively quick, but maybe not.
I'm ready, if you're ready. So I came ready tonight.
It's the will of the board, we can do it.
I didn't have a lot of questions around it, so unless the.
I did not either.
Unless the conversation ignited some more.
All right, let's do it then. I would entertain a motion.
Okay.
I move the board accept the monitoring report EL twelve, learning environment, treatment of students as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Superintendent Bailey.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so EL twelve, learning environment, treatment of students, the superintendent shall not fail to establish and maintain a learning environment that is safe, respectful, and conducive of effective learning. And so when you go to sub-bullet one, fail to assure a climate that is characterized by support and encouragement for high student achievement. And what you see in this EL is kind of a, so how do we do that? We do that through a lot of professional development, through policies and practices that will allow us to maintain these types of learning environments that are safe, respectful, and conducive. So you see, and, and we've updated a lot of this, and, and we do it through how we evaluate our staff and the evaluative standards that we hold, through the professional development that we provide our staff, and through the, the policies that, that we have and implement. And so I won't go, you know, in fact, I think I'm going to go ahead and jump to page three because I just kind of wanted to share some of more, a lot of this has just been updated, and you've seen, seen it in the past, but I'm looking now on, on page three, sub-bullet four from the top, and I just wanted to touch on the professional development that was specific to the nineteen twenty school year for elementary classroom teachers focused on the implementation of the Eureka Math Program and the new social studies curricula and related to state standards, including inquiry-based learning. Our secondary professional development included high school science and math, new curriculum trainings, best practices in grading, and other subject area topics for middle and high school. Additional trainings for K-12 were provided in cultural competency or equity work, our GLAD strategies, PBSES, which we spoke to earlier tonight, and technology integration as well. And, you know, then also, we've had a focus on, in the next bullet down, our focus on inclusive practices and our work with Dr. Jenna Ruffo, and that work continues forward as we strive to become a more inclusive district, particularly of our, our, our students who receive special services. So those, and, and those initiatives roll forward. Of course, everything was somewhat disrupted along the way due to, due to the pandemic. But I don't want to lose sight of those, because we still believe strongly in inclusive practices, and that is a direction our district needs to go. Frankly, it's a direction our state needs to go, because we are one of the least inclusive states in the Union. And so I, I'm glad that we are continuing to work on that. On page four, I, I just wanted to, to call out, you know, we continue to have a robust national board certification program. I'm very proud of our staff who, who work hard to earn their national board certification, and numbers of folks who renew their national board certification as well. We, again, we continue to work on inclusive practices and trauma-informed practices, and I think that these are, these are all things that will serve us well as we come out of this pandemic as well. And some of the issues we've had, increasing and, and more sophisticated use of the data that informs us. And we've had a number of conversations about our WA Kids data and how that's being used, our, our data disaggregating software, Home Room, the Swiss data that we use to help inform on some of our behavioral interventions, helps promote our MTSS work. So there's just, you know, emergency and crisis response trainings, the training for MTSS and our multi-tiered, it's really pretty remarkable. And, and when you go to page five and you see just during the nineteen twenty school year, how much staff training and how many staff participated in trainings, it's really remarkable. And, and I'm just, I'm proud of the system for that and for all the effort that our staff put in. It's, it's just incredible when you see numbers like, there were six hundred and eighty-nine sections offered with three hundred and twelve courses during the twenty nineteen twenty academic year. There were a hundred and four thousand five hundred and eight general clock hours, which is in our profession, is how we do our certificate renewal. Nine thousand four hundred and twelve STEM clock hours, because there's a new requirement now for teachers to get STEM clock hours in order to renew their credentials. And, you know, I just love that we're able to provide all of this, because it makes us a better system, better trained, better skilled, and it also provides that service to our teachers who need to renew their certificates right here in-house. I did miss an important bullet, two on five, right near the top, that during the switch to remote learning due to the school closure, our, our instructional technology TOCs offered training in a variety of technologies to facilitate remote teaching. Remember, prior to March, remote teaching was not something we really concerned ourselves with in the ISD. While we have a wonderful online program, and I should, I should remind, we had an earlier discussion about that, we have an online learning department in this district, and we have hundreds and hundreds of kids who take online courses through the ISD and through the providers that we work with. So that's not new to us, but that's very different than turning your whole system into a remote learning system. And so we tasked our teaching and learning department and our instructional technology folks with the job of taking our fourteen hundred certificated educators and giving them a skill set that many of them never even contemplated that they might need to have. So they, the technology TOCs has offered training in a variety of technologies to facilitate remote learning, topics focused on tools to facilitate communication in remote environment, creating sharing, cloud-based documents, student engagement, and that's just to name a few. More than seventy-five hours of training was offered between the end of March, just as the pandemic was setting in through the first week of June. So even before the last, before the year ended last year, we had pushed seventy-five hours of training out to our staff, and that certainly helped us this fall when we came back and had to implement a fully remote system. I just want to make it clear to the board that, in sub-bullet three, to permit, we do, the superintendent may not permit the administration of corporal punishment. We don't do that in the Sequoia School District. We follow the law, and we don't use corporal punishment. We are also very, we continue to be very mindful of how we collect and store and transmit student data. We try to keep our, you know, we frequently have to update our passwords, which can be problematic for someone my age who struggles with a little bit of that, but we, we continue to work on, on security issues and maintaining appropriate confidentiality of documents for our students. And we, we continue to be good at, we make sure that appeal rights are easily communicated to students and parents if they have an issue with something. If it's a disciplinary issue, a suspension, we make sure that in every letter, the appeal rights are embedded in that, so we continue to do that. And we, and then on item seven, fail to protect students who have voiced grievances from retaliation within the school environment. That is something that is obviously very important to us, so that our students and community members can feel that they can question a decision that we've made, appeal a decision we've made, and not have to worry about retaliation for that. That's, I'll just stop there and take questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I think I just did a very thorough job in presenting.
I'm sure that was it. I apologize, my microphone was off.
It was very well done.
However, I did call for questions from the board, and there were none. I'm not sure why we've got the agenda up there, but, okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. And as was noted earlier, next year we'll have a different version of this yell that will be monitored.
Yes.
Based on the earlier action of tonight.
Okay, and I think that was all just a ploy on Dr. Gallager's part to get out of doing legislation, but we're back.
No, here's another play. I I I asked uh, Mr. Cooper, our chief finance officer, to really provide. The board uh, what he believes the budget will fall now that we're getting really close.
Yeah.
So, hello again. I was just messaging one of our legislators trying to figure out what the most current information was. And um, I was told that uh, the the Senate made a motion to. Uh, send HB fourteen seventy six back to the House with the one year and that it's likely to pass.
That was what the House wanted, correct? Remember which body wanted two and which wanted one.
Yes, the House wanted one.
The House wanted one, so this is, this, this is what will likely help get that passed. Just to be clear, we made it clear to our legislators. That uh, we wanted this to pass. We would prefer a two year, but in absence of an agreement on a two year, absolutely a one year, so I. I'm encouraged.
It's not a done deal yet, um, but I I believe the Senate.
Of course, we had, we had already factored that one passing in for budgeting.
To uh, folks to know that again, my math was correct in that regard. Um, and I do believe. The capital budget has just been released, the conference budget for capital. I haven't had a chance to look at it. Uh, I did talk to, I said, one of our um, uh, representatives or legislators. And he said the budget was likely to be out Friday, but the way the pace is going now, it could be Saturday. Um, before uh, budget is released. He was optimistic that there would be some form of uh, additional revenue above the SIR allocation. And of course, wasn't able to provide that because there's a very small number of individuals that are negotiating the budget at this point in time. For those folks who don't know, when session gets close to being done, legislators and. A few chosen members go into conference or any kind of a black box where they're negotiating the last bit of the operating or whatever budget they're in charge of. And then all of a sudden, an agreement will come out. So we are still waiting for the agreement on the four corners. But um, hopefully, uh, we should have some positive news and get a little bit of additional revenue. So that is all I know now. I that, Dr. Gallagher, that could range between. Um, it's the full additional twelve hundred uh, dollars a student, which is three hundred on SIR approximately and the twelve, fifteen hundred, that would be. Close to twenty, twenty two million, and obviously, anything in between. So if it's a thousand dollars, then we would get seven hundred bucks ahead. Which would be roughly fourteen million, so.
Do we, do we happen to know who is the chosen who's under negotiating?
Do we have relationships with them?
Um, we do not. I have been, I do not have any, I I know quite a few legislators and I have been. Messaging and working with my usual ones, but they are not in the, in the current loop.
This has been a challenging session as well for um, for those of us that like to lobby what's going on down in Olympia. I was involved in a, a conference call earlier today and just there was some, some grumbling about the fact that. Given the virtual nature of it and everything, it, it has really presented some challenges, um, this go around. You know, normally, um, you all, us, we'll, we'll go down there and hang out in the hallways and catch people. You know, coming out of conference rooms and things like that and 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 certainly the lobbyists will will work that and that just has not been available to people this year. So, and in the last several days, things have really kind of gotten dark down there. So I appreciate that we have local. Um, elected officials who are willing to still communicate with us a bit right now, um, because. It it has felt uh, different this time, I guess. It's, it's been harder to to make these kinds of.
And I think the COVID environment has been positive in the fact that remote testimony has been easier for a lot of folks as they testify. But again, that personal contact, handing somebody a bill, you know, shaking them in their hand and. Um, you know, actually having a conversation has been impossible.
For me, it's, 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 yes, that you can do a great job with remote teaching too, but it is not a substitute for the in person experience. We need an in person experience, I think, down in Olympia to uh, to lobby at times.
Superintendent and I have had great communications with um, Senator Mullet and Representative Callen.
Yeah, our legislators are are good about about communicating with us. It's just, there's a lot of them down there. And ours don't, you know, they, they advocate for part of what we do and and everything, but there's a lot of demands being placed on. Legislators as well.
So I I am cautiously optimistic that we will have some additional proceeds, however, until the the gavel falls and it's sign of die. Um, you never know, so. But those are the tea leaves, breadcrumbs, whatever you like to describe them that I know about today, Dr. Gallagher.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I figured you have the most up to date information. And the only thing is, is this is a time of year for legislative positions. And so I know the Eastside school directors have had conversations. I don't know if. Director Maraldo, you have any updates as far as any joint positions that we were gonna have or push forward regarding like COVID recovery or. Um, things like that that weren't part of any existing legislative advocacy positions on behalf of WASDA?
Um, I don't know of any, but I think um, we started kind of talking about it at our last week's um, joint, meaning Eastside. Uh, coalition, uh, but I think that's probably further discussion. Um, we had an FRN meeting yesterday. Uh, from WASDA and one of the things, I missed most of it, but when I came back, one of the conversations I had with. Um, uh, from Sandy from North Shore and with Logan from WASDA. Was around really getting definition of what is poverty and why does the house and and. Seeing if we can write a position around wanting to accept the housing and urban development definition of poverty. Based on area median income as opposed to the current Department of Education that bases it on another number that is a. A percentage of national median income. And uh, Sandy was like, she's, she was like, that's, that's something she's been wanting to work on as well, and I think I've mentioned it. Um, how it impacts districts and so, um, yeah, so I think that because of how title was spent out. It really highlighted the difference in what that means. What would be considered extreme low income. When housing and urban development is not even qualifying for reduced lunch in Isaguac. So I mean, it's, it's, that's, that's a little abnormal, I think.
I mean, every parent, community member and staff member in Isaguac School District should be very upset. By how these federal recovery SIR dollars have been distributed and how inequitably they've been distributed. Given that COVID impacted every district to the same degree, given the amount of closures and the fact that. You know, I was meeting with the school director earlier today who was like, uh, we don't even know how we're gonna spend all our money. And I know that is more common than not.
Yes.
And yet we have a gaping hole just because of the formula.
Yeah, and I have, and we have to hear from staff members that potentially are about to lose their employment because of that. So yes. I couldn't agree more, um, Dr. Gallagher. I I I do want to note, there's a couple of other pieces of legislation that. Are um, we, we are trying to wrap our heads around a little bit um, in the, on the employee side. And they have to do with long term care insurance and disability insurance. And some of the things that we're gonna have to communicate to our employees about the ability to opt out and. It it, it's, I don't even fully understand it yet. We certainly will. It's just, uh, it's got. It's something that's got a, a number of us a little concerned because we have some deadlines and things. And when you have to communicate things like this to. Three thousand employees and and potentially sometimes create undue stress on them, you just, you don't want to have to do it. But uh, we'll sort through all of that and uh, move forward to the best of our ability and support our employees as much as we can.
Okay, so that's it on legislation. Works in process, back to you, superintendent.
Yeah, um, today is Earth Day. I just wanted to call that out, um, because you know, uh, since I've been superintendent, I've made. Uh, sustainability, um, one of our, one of the things that we strive for. And so it's just a good reminder that um, even during a pandemic and everything else, we still need to. Uh, be conscious about our environment and our impact on our environment. And um, what we can do to create and promote sustainable uh, processes. And this is a real proud point for the Isaguac School District. There are trophies in that trophy case in the back of the room. That we've received all the way from the federal government down to the state and county government. And this is something that our, our students and staff have really leaned into over the last decade or so, so I'm very proud of them and. So let's, let's just recognize all that good work on today is Earth Day. Um, I also wanted to give another shout out because it's gonna happen in between our meetings, but May seventh. Will be school lunch heroes day, and they are receiving the extra mile award because. School lunch personnel have really done some incredible work in our district and really across the region and country during this pandemic. Making sure that we never stop providing food to those in need in our community. We, we have been a major source of being able to do that. We've done it in a number of ways. We've created locations throughout the district. Early on, when we were able to, we were actually delivering food out to communities in our school buses, and I'm just really proud of the work that. That we've been able to do and just kudos, and I couldn't agree more with the state in in recognizing our school lunch heroes. And that will be on May seventh, and so I just wanted them to get that recognition. This is a recognition that's already passed, but it happened during our uh, uh, during our spring break week. And I just wanted to make you aware of it, and I did recognize um, our employees and it was um, assistant principal week. April fifth through the ninth. And in my career, I spent three years in the seat of an assistant principal, and I will tell you, it is a challenging job at times. Uh, I was an assistant principal, in in a middle school assistant principal, and I just wanted you to all know that we. We totally honor and recognize our assistant principals across the district and um, many of them, you know. I hope will be principals one day too, so uh, just happy, happy to recognize and honor them. Uh, this is admin uh, professionals week, so. My, my uh, left hand over here, right hand and the person that most people go to if they want to get to me, uh, Ms. Gambari. And our support staff, Ms. Francis in our office and really across this building and out in our schools, our principal secretaries. We are just so fortunate to have these amazing office uh, professionals that support us, and I just can't say enough about Diane. So I know she's sitting back there off camera. Thank you, Diane. Congratulations on admin professional week. And then um, I did want to just uh, uh, touch on, last time I I believe I shared that. We do have T-Mobile Park for an in person graduation for our three comprehensive high schools. We're very excited about that. We are still getting uh, details from T-Mobile Park. I will tell you, it will look different. It will be different and. When we have the final details, I'll, I'll certainly share that with all of you. I know it's gonna be a condensed time because they. They need more time in between them for cleaning and things like that, but you know what? We're gonna do whatever it takes to just make that event happen because i- it's really for those students that that get the opportunity to walk across that stage. And so we're excited about that. And good news on the uh, graduation front for Gibson Eck, who will be graduating the day before. Thursday, June tenth, um, they have their graduation now scheduled for outside on the lawn. In front of the Isaguac Community Center, and they can host uh, two hundred and eighty people. So that will be, that will be really nice for for a school that size to be able to do that. So we're excited. Um, about the Gibson Eck ceremony coming as well. And then lastly, I just want to give a shout out reminder to the community that the Isaguac Schools Foundation Nourish Every Mind virtual event. Is Thursday, April twenty ninth at seven PM, and I would encourage people, you see signs going up around the community, their live auction. Or their virtual auction is happening right now, and uh, the foundation is just such a wonderful partner for us. So I would encourage people to support the Isaguac Schools Foundation, and here's an opportunity to do that. You can always go under their website and support them anytime, but. The Nourish Every Mind luncheon is, is always, a virtual event this year is always a fun thing, so. That's all I had, President Weaver.
No, I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on. I was trying to be good about that and then I forgot. So anyway. Announcements and correspondence are on the agenda. Um, calendaring, we have. Uh, since Ron mentioned the Nourish Every Mind event, it conflicts with the Region Two WASDA Spring Meeting. Um, my thought was to divide and conquer. Um, I know that Director Maraldo needs to be at the WASDA event. I am assuming Director Gallagher does as well.
I'm running it, so, yep.
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm kind of thinking I should be at the foundation event.
Um, I'm planning to do the foundation.
Yeah, and uh, you can do whatever you want. Uh, so please don't let WASDA be offended by the fact that we felt we had to uh, attend a.
I mean. If I wasn't on the WASTA board.
Yeah, a once, a once a year community event that provides funding for us, so seemed, seemed like the thing to do. Um, we have, we need to schedule an auditor exit conference, which we do every year. Two board, two board members meet with the CFO and the state auditors to discuss the results of the audit. Um, so I think actually the first thing we need to do is decide which two directors those are. If we have any volunteers.
It's been a long time since I've done it, so I'd be willing.
Okay, Director Maraldo. I mean, I'm always happy to do it, but I think I've done it. For the last couple of years because nobody else could, so, okay, Director Moore. So I believe um. Diane left a doodle on, you guys all got this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Diane left a doodle link on the um, on the email if you guys could complete it and we can get that scheduled.
Well, I don't have an official announcement. I do believe that's gonna be a very positive meeting like it has been for the last eighteen years as well.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
I, I think that would be a nice piece of good news. Um, other calendar items, oh, yes. Uh, next Monday, uh, Anne and I will um. Be hosting a board candidate information night, so this is for anyone who is thinking they might be interested. In running for the two board seats. They are director areas two and four. Is that correct? Okay, and um, however, if. Anyone who is just interested in being a candidate for a board seat is welcome to attend. Obviously, those are the only two. That are up for election this year, but seats one, three and five will be up for election in twenty twenty three. So um, we will answer questions, provide information, um, run through the board member handbook. Et cetera, et cetera. Um, we have a board retreat scheduled April twenty eighth from nine to five. I was gonna have a draft agenda of that done, but I don't, so that's coming. Uh, the city of Isaguac is hosting um, three outreach meetings to discuss. Uh, SROs, and we have been invited to all of those, I believe. Um, so you should have received that from the city.
This is a partnership between the city and our equity department.
Yeah.
We'll be looking at, yeah, school resource officers. Uh, we'll be, we'll be looking, you know, we're, we're looking at all of our school resource officers, of course. In the context of this, but this is specific to the Isaguac um, school resource officer and the Isaguac Police Department.
And it looks like, um, because from the original thing I saw, I, I didn't know that some are targeted at parents and two are targeted. Is that what it is?
That's my understanding, yes. Parents more of a, I, I thought it was more in general community, but it's listed as parents here.
So is it an issue to sit in on the student one if what they're looking for is. So is it an issue to sit in on the student one if what they're looking for is student voice? Or is it okay to just sit in and be a?
I believe it is, Director Moore, but you know what? I'll clarify that with Executive Director Siva Dawson, just to make sure that they, if there, if there's a concern that it will influence what students might be willing to say. I, I think we all got invites.
We did get invites. All three of us did.
The intent is that it's okay.
And I actually talked to Mayor Paulie on, on, on these events. And I think the goal would be for all the relevant decision makers to hear the opinions of people in those groups as they're separated. So I would think it would be good to attend one of the student ones and one of the, I guess, parent or adult.
I just got a text on my wrist telling me it's not an issue.
Yeah, I don't think it's an issue.
There's people out there in the virtual world just watching everything. So.
Which is interesting because we're down to only 25 people watching, but.
Yeah, a chunk of them are probably my cabinet.
I guess so. But we did, this was surprisingly low attendance for this meeting. Oh, okay. Oh, that's right. Cause they can watch. They can watch without being on the Zoom. I always forget that. Last but not least, we have two superintendent evaluation sessions scheduled, May 6th and June 3rd. And we're back to having them at my house in person, not virtually. So I will see you then.
And I sent out the survey in the pool. If everybody got that and fill it out.
Yes, Ann tested it out on me and I like it better than Survey Monkey. I thought it was cleaner and easier to use.
Good.
I didn't actually fill it out with real thought.
We had very good random thoughts too, and I, as we tried to just test my system.
I did. I wanted to make sure I could write a lot of words and, okay. And that's all I have on calendaring unless somebody else has anything else.
No, I had sent something to you. There, there was a resolution from WASDA about the plan that needs to go to OSPI on June 1st that we need to take action on. So just as a reminder that that needs to be.
We should do that in agenda planning.
Yeah.
Yeah, staff has.
Saying it because I will likely forget when it comes to agenda planning to say, oh wait, that needs to be there.
Yeah, staff does have the plan. We've already had our preliminary discussions about it. I will just tell you, there's aspects of it that we think are, we're not huge fans of, but it is what it is. And we'll, we'll fulfill our obligation and get it before the board.
Okay. And unless there's anything else for the board, it is 10:01. Are we ready to adjourn? Almost. And we're adjourned.
And we did the executive limitation. So thank you.